All right, well, it's five thirty-two. I guess we're gonna start soon. Are we ready to start soon? Man behind the glass, yeah?
We're recording.
We're recording now? Okay. All right, today is twenty-fourth of July, two thousand and twenty-five, and this is the regular meeting of the Rockport Planning Board. This board consists of up to seven Rockport resident volunteers appointed by the Select Board to review land use applications, changes to zoning, and other duties prescribed in the ordinances of the town and laws of the state related to town planning. So we have at least four members in attendance today to constitute a quorum, so I'm calling this meeting to order at five thirty-two. Tonight's agenda consists of the following items. First thing we have to do is elect a chair and a vice chair for the coming year. Approve minutes for the past, I think, three meetings. A site plan review application for a parcel. And a review of findings of facts and conclusions of law. And then we're going to talk about land use ordinance amendments and subdivision ordinance at the end of the meeting. Any adjustments anyone would like to make to the agenda? Okay. So first thing we have to do is, excuse me, accept nominations for chair of the Town of Rockport Planning Board.
I'd like to nominate Jeff Leclerc for chair.
I'll second that.
Thanks, Tom. Thanks, Jay.
Do you need a second?
No, don't need a second for nominations. Any other nominations for chair? Hearing none. All those in favor of, since there's only one person?
Acclamation.
All those in favor, okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. Five-zero in my favor. You're welcome. Nominations for vice chair?
I'd like to nominate Sam Clark for vice chair.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other nominations for vice chair? Hearing none. All those in favor of Sam Clark for vice chair of the Rockport Planning Board. There's five votes. Thank you very much. Now we can proceed. Our office starts at the end of this meeting, from what I've learned from the bylaws, so. On-going basis. Are there any comments from the public on non-agenda items? Hearing none. Thank you. So we can move on to minutes. The March, May, and June minutes are outstanding. They've been in the SharePoint folder for you all to review. I hope you've had a chance to review them. I will say that the, we do have the right folks here to approve those minutes. They just need a majority of the people that were at that, that are here, that were at that meeting, and also at least four members voting in the affirmative for anything, so we do have those people here. Were there any comments that folks had about the meeting minutes that they'd like to discuss?
Of any of the three or?
Of any of the three?
Yes.
Okay, so which one would you like to talk about?
For June twenty-sixth.
Okay.
The person named Mary O'Rear may use an apostrophe, may have a capital R. I don't know the person. Do we know for sure that we're spelling it correctly?
Yes.
Okay, that's it.
Any other comments that people would like to highlight? I'm not planning on going through all of these minutes. They're purely for, you know, town records. They're not sort of part of the legal basis of what we do, so I don't feel like we need to go through them too thoroughly, but if anyone felt like there was something completely out of whack, we can certainly talk about it. I've made some edits to it, and I hope you've all had a chance to look at them and make edits in the document, and I know Tom was thorough on some of his edits.
Maybe too thoroughly.
Maybe too thoroughly? No, I mean?
You know, I found, I found really nothing substantively at issue.
Okay.
Mostly what I made were what I felt to be clarifying things like adding the subject of a sentence or something.
Right, right, right. I will say, I, I, go ahead.
Sorry, why were we looking at the one from March? Because we never looked?
We never actually, we never actually approved it, yeah. I think that was one that somebody, I don't remember who, had a chance to review it, but wanted a little bit more time.
I think that might have been me.
Okay. I will say they got better, and I do like the timestamps that are in them for sort of posterity. If anyone ever read the thing and wanted to look at the video, they'd know where to go for that, so I encourage that. So are we all set with reviewing these minutes?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Everyone? Okay, so one by one, can we get a motion to approve each of these? And we'll start with March.
So we're gonna move to approve the March minutes as amended currently.
Second that.
Second.
Okay, Sam moved. Tom second. Any further discussion? All those in favor approving?
I can't.
Four, zero, and some abstain.
Yeah, he wasn't at that meeting.
Yeah. Yeah, you weren't at that meeting, okay. Okay, thank you. May's meeting minutes?
Move to approve the May meeting minutes as amended.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Jan, you weren't at that meeting, I think. Okay, all those in favor approving the minutes? Four. All those opposed? Abstain. Jan? Four, zero, one. June's minutes? Is there a motion?
Remove that the June minutes be approved as written.
Thank you, Jan.
Seconded.
Seconded by Sam. Any further discussion? I think, Rob, you weren't at that meeting?
Yeah, I wasn't at that one.
Okay, so the rest of us were. All those in favor approving the minutes? Four. All those opposed? Zero. Stain. Rob? Okay, so that's the minutes. Okay. Next item of business is a site plan review application for a parcel located at fourteen Business Circle. This parcel is identified as tax map zero-one-six dash one-oh-seven dash zero-zero-two for Atlantic Academy Preschool. This application is being represented by Jed Schwam of Schwam LLC. Is the applicant here today?
That's me.
That's you? If you'd like, you could step up and sit at one of these seats. Just talk clearly into the microphone, honest. Does anyone on the board wish to identify a conflict of interest that would prevent them from rendering a fair judgment on this application? Hearing none. Thank you. So what we're gonna do is first ask you to present what this project is for you all.
Yep.
Then we're going to provide clarification questions to you, just for clarification purposes. And then the time is given to the public to make any comments. I don't see any public here, but they may respond online, or there may have been some late letters that came in. And then we'll go through our deliberations on it. You can ask the questions. You can just stay sitting there. So I'll turn the floor over to you.
Yeah, so I'm representing Atlantic Academy as the executive director. I also have Schwam LLC. We currently have a, a site in Camden. I don't know. A lot of people in the community don't know about us, but we've been around since two thousand and seventeen as a special purpose private school. Licensed certified by the State of Maine DOE, we provide programming for at-risk youth. Kindergarten through eighth grade, kids who get tuitioned in from public school districts all over mid-coast Maine. Kids with emotional behavioral disorders. And because Child Development Services is changing how they operate, they're turning over the responsibility of special needs pre-K kids to public schools. And that is starting in twenty, I think, twenty-twenty-nine. Some school districts are starting to take that on. And so we felt like there would, there would be a need for a specialized pre-K program in the area. And after talking to the specialized directors in the region, that was confirmed that there is a program need for us. So yeah, we identified that site, fourteen Business Circle, which was already a pre-K preschool building for a number of years. It's perfect. We don't have to do any construction. We're doing exactly what they were doing, except we'll be providing more specialized treatment for kids with special needs. That's, that's what we're doing.
Okay.
Yeah.
Questions? Go ahead, Tom.
Are you associated with this group?
I'm, I'm the executive director of Atlantic Academy.
Okay.
Yep, yeah.
Clarification questions?
Who will own the building?
I will. Schwam LLC, yeah.
You're leasing it to yourself as?
To the nonprofit with board approval.
Right.
Yep, there's been attorney oversight, and that's something I have to be transparent on every time I fill out our taxes about conflict of interest, so, yeah.
And you've been a five-oh-one C-three, or just, it was probably different, probably different.
Yeah, it's that. Yeah, it's that. Yep, we've been that since two thousand and seventeen. Yeah.
Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you. So it gives tax dollars to Rockport instead of the nonprofit buying it. But that would be difficult for the nonprofit to buy it anyway. So, yeah, thank you.
Rob, do you have any clarification questions?
No.
Okay. Sam?
I'm just.
The only question that I have, actually, is since there is not really a change of, of use, it was a preschool, it's going to be a preschool, why are we, why are we here?
Well, I guess that was it, yeah.
Before we answer that last, let Sam ask a question.
No, that was.
Same question?
The change of use being marked off, that was all.
I guess that's the question to you, is what, what's the change of use that we're reviewing? What's the change from?
I, I'm not aware of any change of use.
What is the current use of that building?
It's been vacant for approximately a year, I would say. It's been on the market for a year. Yeah.
And the last use of it was for, as a daycare?
Yeah, yeah, little learners daycare. Yeah. Yeah, I was, I was, I was told I need to come.
Okay.
To, to present it, so, yeah, that's what I'm doing.
So to speak on that just a little bit? Well, no, so, to speak on a little bit, it's within the two-year item. The code enforcement officer felt that because it was a daycare, and then before that it was a dance studio, but if you look at it, they categorized it as a school, because I didn't really know how to fit it in. So he felt with that kind of shift, he wasn't comfortable enough with just issuing a permit, so he felt it needed to go to this level. So that's why you're saying it.
So it was originally built in two thousand and seven?
Yeah.
So, yeah.
And it was reviewed by the planning board?
Mm-hmm.
And it was approved as a daycare?
As a, as a school, categorized as a school before a dance studio.
Okay.
Right, because there wasn't a dance studio.
Like children's dance, or?
So.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But it was used, I mean, technically, that's also considered a daycare because it was children?
Yeah, so I guess the change of use from that school to the daycare was less of a use. It didn't trigger anything, so it could get permitted to be used as a daycare.
Okay.
So when they made the modifications from dance studio to daycare, did they come through the planning board then?
No, they went through the code enforcement to get permitted.
So now that they're going from daycare to daycare, the code enforcement now?
Well, daycare to school. It's a pre-K to eighth grade?
Well, no, this will be, this will be pre-K. We are considering having kindergarten, first grade with this population since developmentally. But it's gonna start as a pre-K program, three to five years old. Yeah. Honestly, I don't know the difference between daycare and pre-K and preschool.
So I guess, I guess the, the item for the planning board, you're gonna look at this, and you're already looking at it, the applicability. Is it an intensity use that would warrant the change? If so, then you would review it as a full site plan review or the site plan review. If not, then it goes back with the opinion that you don't believe it to be, and then it would go through the code enforcement. So.
Go ahead, Tom.
All right, could you tell us a little bit about the number of instructors or employees you're going to have at the location?
Yeah.
And the number of anticipated students, if you will?
Yeah, so we're going to, twelve students is what we're looking at. If we go beyond twelve, thirteen, and beyond, the fire marshal has to come in and do a review. They have to do a second review, because a part of DHS, DHHS licensing, the fire marshal will already come in and do a review. But over twelve students, I believe that will require us to get a sprinkler system, which is very expensive. So I want to keep it around twelve students. And that will, that will generally mean we will have one teacher, one full-time teacher there. With twelve students, we will have three other staff, so that's four adults. And then between myself, my clinical director, and my business manager, which they have offices at our main building here in Camden, we'll just be going back and forth and overseeing the program. But full-time staff will be there for twelve students. I'm anticipating three with maybe a fourth part-time staff. Parents coming and going to drop off kids, picking them up.
Okay, and no one stays there over?
No, no, it's a, it's a.
Not a boarding thing at all?
No, no, no. That is not the kind of work I want to get into. I came from that world, but, you know.
No meals being served?
No meals being served. That's another, you know, major issue that we would have to go through the state, and we don't want to deal with that.
Understood.
Yeah.
So as far as, like, structurally, is this, do you plan on doing anything to the existing building, or either interior or exterior?
No, that was why it was so attractive. We don't have to do anything. I just had an inspection done on it. You know, built in two thousand and seven, it's on a slab. The interior is already built out as, as a preschool, which was very different than the teen center when we bought that. That was not built out for a school, so we've had to renovate that over the years. But this is already ready to go.
How's your parking areas, parking space?
Good, I think it's, I think it's, I think it's twelve. Yeah, twelve parking spots.
Do the, do the drawings that we received as a site plan that was part of the two thousand and seven
Yeah.
application, do those reflect what's there today?
Yeah, those apply. Right, yeah, there's been nothing. I think they, they must have renovated it for the preschool, for the daycare.
That shows sixteen spaces.
Okay, sixteen. Thank you, yeah.
Fifteen, one of those, they can't put a double space cleared out.
And again, right.
But, yeah.
Sixteen.
Seemed like more than enough for what we were doing. Yeah.
Seventeen, actually.
Oh.
Yes.
Even more so.
One, two, three, four, five, plus nine. Okay, I'm gonna actually just cut us off, because I think we are asking questions that we'll ask when, and if we review it. So I'm going to allow and open the public comment period, seeing no members of the public in that room today. Orion, were there any late submitted letters that?
Let me check my email real quick.
Okay.
I have not received anything as of today. I didn't receive any at all, but.
Okay, thank you. Okay, then I'm gonna close the public comment period, and then we can start deliberations. So what we normally start with is a section thirteen oh-four, which is to determine the completeness of this application. It, this application consists of a letter and the site plan from two thousand and seven. So this isn't so much a proposal of what the applicant wants to do on the site. It's more so what is currently there and was approved in two thousand and seven, under the two thousand and seven Rock, Town of Rockport Land Use Ordinance. So our question for this is, do we determine this is a complete application? I think, in order to get to us, Orion would have determined that, that this is a complete application insofar as, you know, to this question as to our review, right?
Well, I would, I would say, yeah, it, this is one of the, one of the items we've gotta kind of, kind of balance. Applicability, how do you determine the full applicability without a complete application? And there's not really that
Yeah.
level. So they've got a change of use. Is it a complete application? If, if it's just a change of use request, they're not changing anything, my office would say yes. What is before you should warrant a complete application.
Go ahead, Rob.
I don't know, I just, it's like, are we, are we going through the steps to approve this?
This right now is just a question.
Is this applicable for us?
Like, have they, has he filled out his name and put it on the form?
Right, I know, but even taking a step back, like, is the question, should this go before the planning board?
Yeah.
I think that's the next question.
Okay.
So first question is, do we have an application in front of us that is complete to the point where we could review it? Not that this is part of the review, it's just like, does this look like a complete application? Our ordinance is actually amended to say that Orion's office can determine that, and we don't have to determine it.
So I was gonna say, like, you're done.
So we just have to accept that he's giving it to us. It's kind of, sort of a moot review, but we say, yes, Orion has determined it's complete. Do we take his completeness judgment?
Yes.
Yes, we do.
Okay, can I get a motion to that effect, that the application, I didn't write this down? The application meets the requirements of chapter thirteen hundred, section thirteen oh-four for completeness?
So moved.
Thanks, Sam.
Seconded.
Seconded by Jan. Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor? Five, zero, zero. Okay. So now we can talk about whether we feel like we should review this under the site plan review, or if we feel like this is something that is a permitted use reviewed by the code enforcement officer. So I guess I'm still a bit unclear. This was approved in two thousand and seven. I'm gonna look to Orion for this answer. Two thousand and seven is what use?
As, as, as the definition of a school.
School.
For the use of, of the daycare that was coming in, they, they, that planning board determined that that met the qualifications of a school at that time.
Okay.
You saw, I think you meant dance studio.
A dance studio, sorry.
Dance studio.
A dance studio.
School of dance.
Yes.
Okay. And what we're reviewing it for is, as we think, perhaps we'll go over this, but we think this might be a daycare, not a school? That's our question.
I, I don't, I think they're doing a school.
He's not asking you to do a daycare. He's asking you to do a school.
School, right.
Yes.
But it's pre-K, so he's unclear as to what our definition of one versus the other is, so that's for us to determine whether this is a school or a daycare. That's part of our chapter nine hundred review.
Okay. I don't think that's Mr. Schwam's problem. I think that's our problem.
Well, that's our problem. If we answer, I think if we were to answer that question by saying, this is a school, and it has been approved as a school, that's a different position for us to be in, to say that this is a daycare, we determined, but it was approved as a school, so there may be a slight change of use there. School to school, there's no change of use.
I understand, and that's what I think it is.
Okay.
I mean, I think that.
Are you gonna advertise this to people as a daycare center?
No.
No.
It's a, it's a special purpose private school under Maine DOE.
That's, that's what I think.
That's a school.
Schools will be taking on the pre-K. They already started doing that, so.
The cover page of the application is to operate as a preschool.
Yeah.
Preschool.
Do you have any sense at all of how many students that building has handled in the past, when it was a school?
I know.
I don't.
All right, let me put, let me put, let me make a different question.
Yeah.
Is, is the school as it sits now, you're comfortable that it can handle four adults and twelve children?
Oh, yeah, yeah, it's a great space for that. Yeah, it's a better space than Camden, our space in Camden.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess I just don't, I wonder like what the purpose of us debating, like semantics of preschool versus daycare versus like, if the, they're not, they're not making any changes to the building, either exterior or interior. So it doesn't, that seems like the code enforcement or like Department of Education decision, not the planning board.
Right, but a change of use triggers a site plan review. So if we determine that what it was before is different than what it is proposed to be, subject to our definitions of those categories of things, then we could determine it's a change of use or not. So we have to determine what definition this falls under. It was approved as a school, so does it still fall under school as to what he's saying?
The last time it was used, was it used as a school or as a daycare center?
As a school.
Then I don't think, from my point of view, there's no change in years.
You think what their proposal is, is also for school?
Yes, I know. So I don't think there's a change in years.
I mean, Sam pointed out, it says daycare on the cover sheet, so.
No, preschool, but like, yeah, but that's, you know, I mean, like, when you're saying that, you're saying a pre-K school, right? Like, it's, it's just a, a school for children of an age that's pre what the standard is set by, you know, where kindergarten starts, right? Like.
Yeah. Okay, so let's just like dive into the definitions in our ordinance, because I think that, I might just head it off a bit. So the definition of daycare center is a facility licensed by the State of Maine for the care or instruction of children, exclusive of children who may be living in the home, which is serving as the daycare or nursery school facility. That's pretty vague. It doesn't say pre-K, it doesn't say, you know, children of a certain age. It's just the care and instruction of children, and not children who are living at home.
That's for daycare center.
That's for daycare center. So let's go to school. Let's be slower. School is going to, I think we're going to see that the dance school clearly is that. A facility that provides a curriculum of academic instruction, including kindergartens, elementary schools, junior high schools, high schools, and institutions for post-secondary education. Schools may include a place or institution for teaching and learning, including by way of example only, schools for dance, music, writing, gymnastics, photography, driving, or business. So I think daycare is more limited in its scope, and school expresses more interest in the instruction.
Which is what we're bound to, because these kids will have individualized education plans. And we were at a higher level of, of regulations in terms of what we have to provide, which is a curriculum and, and like specialized services, speech, OT, PT.
Right.
Evaluations from psychoeducational, you know, consultants. And, yeah, the kid, we're, we're probably gonna have kindergarten, first grade there, too, because we don't, there's not a big enough sample, a pool to draw from, so we're gonna try to bring kids who are developmentally appropriate to be together. Instead of them, kindergartners being at our Camden building, which goes up to eighth grade, you know, this would be more appropriate, so.
So whereas daycare center says care or instruction, school definitely says instruction.
If, if, if a woman with a four-year-old showed up at your office and said, I'm looking for daycare for my son while I go to work every day, your answer would be, I'm sorry, we're not a daycare center, we're a school?
They, the only way we could get kids is through a school district's special education director, as well as child development services.
I think it's a school.
We don't even accept private pay.
You think it's a school?
Right.
Yeah.
Public funded, publicly funded.
I guess I'm just.
Hold on, I'm just gonna ask Tom, do you think it's a school or daycare center?
I, I can't answer that question.
Okay, Rob, do you have a position on that question?
Oh, I'm just looking at the definitions in the land use ordinance. And change of use, any alteration of the activity habitually taking place on a property or in a structure that results in a change in the classification or description of that activity under this ordinance. Examples include, and are not limited to, changing from residential to commercial, changing from a restaurant to a professional office. I feel like if, whether we call it a daycare or whether we call it a pre-K, it doesn't change anything with the land under the ordinance. I don't think, I don't know why it would. I don't know why, like, that would be the planning board's jurisdiction. So to me, I just don't think it, I don't think it fits the change of use for us, like for the code enforcement, sure, for any, you know, Department of Ed, definitely. But like, for us, it's not, it doesn't, I don't know, I don't think that.
I'm inclined to agree with that.
Okay. I think that there, there's, there's a reason behind the change of use, because they are categories that are allowed in certain zones and disallowed in other zones, for whatever reasons, be they agreed upon or arbitrary, that when, say, like a school of dance, which may operate for, not saying for this one, but like for adults only, and it's at nighttime, whereas a daycare is like morning and afternoon thing, there may be some acknowledgement of like, well, that's going to be a different timing of, of activity. So I think there are.
Yeah, and I agree with that, but I just don't.
Change of use gets reviewed?
Right, but I don't think, I don't, unless, you know, someone thinks of anything else, like, okay, so we call it a daycare, we call it a pre-K, it doesn't really affect anything that we. okay, so we call it a daycare, we call it a pre-K, it doesn't really affect anything that we would be looking at in the land use ordinance. It's not like a traffic thing, it's not a, uh.
I still don't understand why we are using the word daycare. Daycare centers, a daycare center is a known quantity. You ask anybody in town what a daycare center is, is this a.
Right.
Department of Health and Human Services who has to license us, and Maine DOE don't consider us a daycare, if that, if that helps.
It does.
Yes, it does.
It is a daycare.
Yeah, I think, I think, I think daycare is a, is a, is a red herring here. There's no, that's not what we should be talking about. We should be talking about, this was a school, it's been vacant, it's gone through an inspection.
Yep.
So it's safe.
Yep.
And it's gonna be a school again. Yep. Yep.
It hasn't been vacant for the.
Two years.
Hasn't been vacant for.
Time period, which would trigger a reevaluation.
Right. Okay, then I think what we need to do is make a determination that the application that's before us is not substantially different from the application that was before this board in two thousand and seven. And that any change that's being proposed here is within the spirit of, what I think would be that ordinance at that time, but in the same definition of what the ordinance today says. So if someone's good at framing a motion, I'd appreciate it on that of basically saying that this should be determined at the code enforcement level, not at the planning board level.
To clarify that just a little bit further, so thirteen oh three applicability number four, which is the any change in use in which the intensity of use is reflected in traffic generated impact on municipal services, the environment surrounding neighborhood will differ in this, in substantial way from that of the preceding use. That is what you would be making a determination on.
I think what we're saying though is that the, the use hasn't changed.
Right.
I think that may be the easiest way to frame it, I think, is that we feel there is no change of use.
Yeah, I, I, I would move that, that since the use of the building hasn't changed from its original approval, that there is no need for the planning board to, uh, um, to reexamine the situation.
Okay.
I would, sorry.
Want to amend that?
Amend it to the most recent use probably, rather than originally, original.
Okay.
Approval.
No. Fine with that.
Well, Sam's saying that.
Well, I mean, it's, most recent use is vacant, but it's been approved as a school. I think the original approval school, like, everything matches and everything works through if we have the wording.
Okay.
As, as the original.
Things that happen in the interim are sort of like, you know, not necessarily recorded.
Well, right, and any of the changes that had happened, and there was apparently a couple, but none of them came before the board.
Right.
At that time, so there's never been nothing significant enough during that time.
So I guess, yeah, so we don't tech, like.
We don't see anything other than the original.
It's, it's someone else telling us what, you know, the use was, not necessarily, yeah, okay, I see what you're saying.
Right, so the only thing that got approved by the planning board is the original piece. So we can use Jan's, Jan's original motion.
Okay, no amendments to the motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Rob.
Can we read the motion?
Can we read that? I didn't write it. It's in the video.
Can we repeat the motion?
My, my note is that the change of use is not substantially different than the original use.
Yes, and therefore the, therefore the planning board does not need to reexamine this, this application.
Very good. That is what you said. Okay, any other discussion on this? Okay, Sam?
Well, um, I just wanna clarify with Orion. Is, are we saying the, are we very close to just approving section thirteen point four or whatever it is inside of that piece of no substantial change? Oh three. Like, does it have to have that part? I'm sorry, just like the, the motion doesn't need to have.
No, this, this, this is fine, that, that satisfies the thirteen oh three.
Okay.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
There we go, that was my question.
Okay, any other comments?
No further discussion from me.
All good? Okay, voting, all those in favor of Jan's motion? Five zero zero.
Welcome to Rockport.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
I, I hope it gets better than this.
Well, we also have.
Can we wake up the obligation?
Anything we can do to help.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate that. One question, Orion, this might be for you, is that, um, the form that I need signed.
I got your email.
Okay.
I did.
Okay.
We'll get that signed. I think.
You could email and scan that back if you don't mind, yeah.
Will do. I'll try to get that to you tomorrow.
Perfect. Okay, great, yeah.
Do you have like a specific deadline on when that is absolutely needed by?
Unfortunately, sooner than later, because I can't submit the application for license until I have everything together.
When, when do you think you're gonna be taking, actually taking students?
Hopefully, uh, September, early September, the day after Labor Day, when all the other schools start.
Yeah, yeah, so needed.
Yeah. Yeah, 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 yeah. Thanks for saying that.
Great.
Yeah, thank you, guys.
You got it?
Thank you.
You too.
Am I released?
Yes, you are.
All right.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you very much.
Okay, the next item of business is to review the findings and facts and conclusions of a law for a minor subdivision review application at one thousand one hundred thirteen Commercial Street. The parcel is identified as tax map two lot, um, block one five seven, which is owned by Chelsea Market Realty LLC and named Chelsea Market Subdivision. So Orion, can you bring up the findings of facts and conclusions of law document? So, okay, my comment there is I've reviewed the document. I think I may have made some changes while in edit mode, so I apologize for that, but my edits were minor. Did anyone have edits that they wanted to highlight?
I actually have a lot of, a lot of comments.
Yeah, can, are they in here? Like, are they in here?
No, because I was sent a bunch of PDFs, and so I don't have, I have no access to.
Okay.
To, to be able to put them in.
So how would you like to talk about your comments?
I would be glad to talk about.
Hold on, Jan, you're, you're still having SharePoint issues?
Um, yeah, just, I, you know, what I, when I hit what you sent, it opened up seven or eight PDFs. And so I read them and made my comments on a pieces of paper. It does not open up SharePoint.
Okay, I will check into that.
SharePoint, there would have been Word documents, not, not PDFs.
Mm-hmm.
And so I, so I, I did not get that.
Hold on, is this, is this the automated public notice that goes out? Did you get it on the town website?
Oh.
Are you talking from my personal email?
It comes from you the same way that everyone else comes from you.
Came from your personal email.
It looks the same.
Okay.
Yeah.
Lovely. Okay, I think what you're referencing is the civic ready alert, and that one goes out. To whoever signed up, I think everyone here has signed up, um, that goes to the PDF, so what's on the website? If you look at the email, I'll figure out a way to distinguish between the two, Jan, but.
Okay. All, all of the comments that I have on Chelsea Market are, what, what's this word? What's that word? A change of words, except for, um, six point three fourteen, where it says the zoning district is unknown. I, how could a zoning district be unknown? We must know what's on it.
Zoning district unknown.
Where was that?
On the submissions, um, Article six subdivision ordinance.
Item fourteen.
Fourteen.
That was, um, from their application.
Yeah, that's what they wrote.
That's their submissions.
Okay. Every, everything that else that I have is, is probably grammatical. Do you, do you really want me to go through them now? Or do you want me to bring them to your office and you can change things as you wish? Or do we have to go through everything?
I'm gonna let Jeff.
It should go through today, because today is our chance to, to say yea or nay to it. We're not going to all reconvene at Orion's office for a ad hoc public meeting.
Okay, well, then I'm gonna do it, okay.
You guide Orion as to where you are.
Yep.
And he can.
So it's sub, Article subdivision ordinance, this is, is the findings and conclusion, subdivision ordinance, Article six, minor subdivision, item sixteen, width of streets, not really. What does that mean?
So all of these, Jan, under six point three submissions?
Yeah.
As the list from one to twenty?
Yes.
Is just what the applicant, applicant wrote? So this, I mean, maybe that should be made more clear, but that's just what the applicant wrote. It's not what we found. That's just there, is that correct, Orion?
I, then, then in that case, um, I have no issues with that, because they're all the applicant's problems.
Okay. So go after number twenty, if you don't mind.
After number twenty, um, they're, they're minor, I don't want it, I don't really wanna take up time, because they don't make any difference to anything.
But give us the ones that make a difference.
Well, i- if what this is, is what they wrote, then I have no.
Just that part, just one through twenty.
Okay, um, twenty seven, it says.
Oh, sorry, twenty nine.
Actually, I'm sorry, twenty, um. No, I have nothing, I have nothing, nothing after twenty seven, except at, uh, at, um, Article eleven and at the, um, on the requested waivers. So requested waivers, number one, professional engineers plan, that should be engineer with an apostrophe S, not plural engineers. It's a minor issue, but I'm an apostrophe guy. Article eleven, performance standards, eleven point one to eleven point nineteen, why so many capital letters? It looks like a seventeenth century document. Everything is capitalized, none of it needs to be capitalized.
Oh, yeah, you're right.
Um, and our twelve point one is an actual mistake. Where is twelve point one? Article twelve, design guid- guidelines. Again, we have plural for fire departments, it should be fire department comma, I mean, fire department apostrophe S. A, a comment from the fire department. That's all.
Okay. So all of those capitalized?
All those, none of those things should be capitalized.
Yeah, most of it is not capitalized.
Okay, yes, okay.
Yes.
So that's just, that's four. Other than, other than that, I'm fine with, with the findings of fact.
Okay.
All right.
Okay, anyone else have things they wanna review through here, the findings of facts? Not hearing any, so, um, do we have a motion to approve as edited and as discussed, including the reduction in capitalization that Jan mentioned? The findings and facts and conclusions of law for this, uh, site plan review application?
So moved.
Thank you, Sam. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Tom. Any further discussion? All those in favor? One, two, three, four, all those opposed? All those abstained? Thank you very much. Four zero one. Okay. I just need one thing, which is for, um, a motion to nominate me to sign the document on behalf of the board.
Yeah, I move that the chair be authorized to sign the document, uh, on behalf of the planning board.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Sam, thank you, Jan. Any further discussion? All those in favor? One, two, three, four, zero, one. Okay. Okay, now on to Orion's, um, edits to the land use ordinance, which he is proudly bringing to the screen now.
All right. All right, so a quick overview of everything, so, I don't know if any of you have had a chance to review LD eighteen twenty nine. Uh, I know you got my email. It's further amendments into LD two thousand and three. My opinion on this is the majority of it, we're already satisfied, and we're more than what they want us to do, except for a couple of things, I've incorporated that into, uh, the PUD ordinance. Uh, that's the height allowance, so if you're going through and utilizing LD two thousand and three's density provision with this amendment of eighteen twenty nine, you can then have an additional story added. So I've placed that provision within the PUD ordinance for y'all's consideration.
Is, I was confused at the, sorry, I'm bringing up the thing now. I was confused at the wording of that.
What?
So like, it could be.
With, with what, the, the one story in addition?
Yeah, it's, what it's saying is you could go one story above what.
What our limitation is.
What the limitation is.
Well, actually, it says you have at least a minimum of one story more.
Yeah.
I suppose if we wanted to, we could make the adjustment so that it's, that they're using the PUD and they're putting through that we move more than one story additional.
So they're requiring a minimum from us, and we then require a maximum that we allow?
We have a maximum, they're saying if you're doing, if somebody's using, like, building affordable housing according to these rules, then we don't care what your maximum is, they get at least another fourteen feet.
Right.
But if you're really trying to get more affordable housing and you're trying to get your density piece as a planning board or as a town, you can decide that if they're in, like, not, keep your, keep your regular ordinance in place in terms of max height, but if they're, again, if they're using the, you know, the, the rules around the PUD for building that development in affordable housing, then you could, in, you know, as a way to kind of incentivize that, you could make that number higher. You could give them two extra stories, right, instead of just have one extra. You would have the tallest buildings in town being affordable housing developments, and I don't know if that's necessarily how Rockport's aesthetic wants to roll. But there are, like, this is requiring a minimum of giving them one extra story.
Okay, I was, I was confused with the wording. Okay.
Is that less confusing now or more?
Totally.
Yes, I thought, uh, yeah, that makes a lot more sense, thank you.
Cheers. Yes, right, no less than one story or fourteen feet. To exceed any municipal height restriction.
So what did the proposed change look like from?
Yeah, that, is that the one, Orion?
The proposed change.
Is that the one thing from, um, eighteen twenty nine or whatever it is?
The, in, in the subdivision ordinance, there's a, a change to the definition of subdivision.
Yeah.
We can make the determination of major and minor.
Yeah.
Whatever that is. But the definition that we already have for subdivision defaults to the state anyway, so we don't have to change anything there. We just have to make a change to the minor, uh, definition, because they rule out units, dwellings. So it's just lots at that point, so. If that makes any sense. So within our land use ordinance, um, the density provisions, so when you look at our planned unit development on its own, it far exceeds the per acre density allotment than what the state has set up. So if you look at it from a per acre standpoint, we have more density than what they are hoping to get.
Mm-hmm.
So from that standpoint, we're fine. But if you look at it from a per lot standpoint, because they have some weird language, it was like twelve, it was one thousand two hundred and fifty square feet per unit for the first four. And so first four, pretty much get five thousand square feet, fine. And then everything after that is five thousand square feet, so depending on what you look at on an acreage basis, it comes out that we have more density than what they have, and especially if you put the PUD into consideration. So we don't really need to make a lot of edits, except for the height. So I've added the height in the, um, planned unit, uh, development portion of our ordinance. Once I get there. Last thing, almost there.
I said this would need to go up for a vote at some point?
Yeah, this would go on the town ballot for November. And here we go. So I've added it to the bottom here. Number three, building high maximum indicated in section nine eighteen dimensional tables may be increased by up to one additional story. Any questions? Any questions on that?
Can you read that again, sorry?
Building high maximums indicated in section nine eighteen dimensional tables may be increased by up to one additional story. So we default to our dimensional tables so that we don't have to worry about heights. So whatever the town says, the minimum height or maximum.
And then we're also just going one additional.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, I was using that just for demonstration purposes. I didn't, wasn't actually pitching that we add more than one story for it.
But yeah, but the wording makes more sense.
I can hear Orion's blood pressure going up behind me.
I've, I've actually asked, like, you know, the three is just kind of the common item and our fire department doesn't have an issue with the height, so from a safety standpoint.
I mean, at some point, they're gonna have to have a ladder that's tall enough to get to it, right? Like, there's gonna be somewhere in there, but.
Yes.
So Orion, i- is there no risk that if um somebody follows our ordinance and says, okay, I'm allowed an additional story? They can't then read the state statute and say that an affordable housing development is allowed to exceed any municipal height restriction by no less than one story or fourteen feet? And they're like, ah, I get another one.
Well, so that's the, uh, we can change it, but um we're taking it by no, by 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 at least one, right? So we're saying at least one. We're saying, we're, we're hearing you and we're allowing it within the PUD.
Right, I'm saying.
If they want to go outside the PUD.
No, no, I'm saying that this says, this is a municipal height restriction. And the state statute then allows you to have one over any municipal height restriction.
I guess that would be the argument.
So the only thing I think maybe we might want to add is that per section five thirty A M S M R S A forty three sixty four, cite the statute where it's, it's allowing you that additional story. So that it's not, people can't double up on it.
Okay, we can do that.
Just cite the statute, the state.
Where, what page was that on again?
That's right there, uh, section five two A.
Yep.
I know less than one story.
Yeah, I like that.
It's fine with me. It's a good point.
So he's been hanging around lawyers too much.
It's not, it's not saying that the municipalities shall, as of this date, all increase their, their allowance. It's that you get this on top of whatever they re- allow.
The restrictions, yeah.
Four three six four.
I think most people won't look at this law.
Actually, I mean, we can add that there, that's fine. Uh, up here, we say promoting affordable housing per title thirty A M R S A four three six four, so. So we could, we could argue it either way, but we say it already, we can just go back and.
I like having it in there.
That's fine.
Disagrees, but.
Double down.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, so that, that's it for the PUD and then it's there. Um, do you want me to just go through the rest of eight hundred?
Yes, let's just do it chapter by chapter.
Okay, um, the other amendment that I made, her proposing to make, is accessory dwelling units and it's just the purpose kind of conflicts with uh G down here, so no more than two ADUs are permitted to be added on any lot where a single family dwelling unit is not principal structure, and so the purpose is in conjunction with a single family home or new existing.
Right.
I felt that'd be kind of conflicting a little bit.
Yep.
So.
Yep.
I like that change.
Anyone disagree?
Okay, and then I think that was it. I just want to check. I don't remember changing anything else here. Oh, um, I'm proposing to remove, uh, so in um ba 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 eight oh five lots, three private ways, um, it's just more of a item. Any waivers required by planning board. Any, any waiver requires planning board approval, that's already a given. We can leave it in. I'm just cutting down redundancies.
That's fine, take it out. I'll let people express their disapproval if they want to stop.
Alright, that was it.
Okay.
Eight hundred.
Okay, um, go to the next one, whichever one you want to go to.
Okay. We'll do thirteen hundred. Alright, in thirteen hundred, um, uh, changing um from well, planning development office, that's what the office is, and taking director out and putting planning and development office in. Um, just for ease of access, of keeping things moving in the event someone disagrees. And then board, I've gone through and changed uh where it says board to planning board, because we do have a board.
Those are all appropriate changes, then none of them would have been select word.
Changed um applicability. I, I don't, and this was an item that we've kind of debated on a little bit here. We used to have a subset of the applicability of two. It was like two A and two B. That didn't make sense. It was like the creation of more than ten thousand square feet and it being a commercial building that has been vacant for more than two years. So how do y'all want the applicability? Like, we're in the applicability, you just went through that with an, with a, with an application. Or is there anything else that should be changed in this? That y'all see? I don't see any edits here, but y'all think that that subset A and B are their own standalone thing as well? And not a subset of two?
So.
No, yeah, they seem standalone because it's, yeah, it's different on its own, right?
They're exclusive.
And, and I've, I've looked through previous land use ordinances, like before my time, quite a ways back. And for whatever reason, it was always stepped. I don't know why.
I don't know, put a tab in there and it just stuck.
I think it was just a formatting problem, so.
While we're here and looking at those changes, do we want to make any adjustment to the number of years something's been vacant that triggers the change in use? For more or less?
Do you have a opinion on that? Two years being too short, too long?
Not necessarily. It's just as we're changing these things and they all have to go out to vote if we want to make an adjustment. It seems like the right amount of time. I could, I could see where three, depending if we, you know, like where things are, if you're trying to make things easier, if things have been sitting around longer and you're trying to get people back into them. Pushing the, the amount of time it takes before they have to go come in front of us with a change of use application might make it easier.
But could we still, even if it's two years, we could still just say no change of use, keep doing what you're doing. Oh, never mind.
It's not even necessarily a change of use. It's just any commercial building that's been vacant for two years. So it's like if the owner decides, like, I don't really want to run this for the next couple of years. I'm gonna pull out for a little bit and then he goes back in, he's gonna have to re-review, re- re-review what they do. So it's not necessarily a change of use, it's just if you let something sit for two years and it's a commercial property, you have to re-review it.
Yeah, and I guess my point of that is, do we want to move that to three versus two?
You know, there's that building downtown Camden that's leaning on the building next to it because it's been vacant for so long and the guy who owns it lives in New Jersey and is not interested in correcting it and it's just sitting there leaning.
It's actually sold though. It was sold though.
Finally?
Yeah, yeah, somebody else owns it and they want to develop it. That's Camden's problem.
Yeah. Right, but I mean, let's say like we have enforcement ways of handling buildings that are derelict, you know what I mean? Like, we've dealt with that. This is just more of how long do we want things to be able to sit before they're required to have red tape to get fired back up again?
Yeah, I can't, I can't think of any that I've observed or been a part of, applications where it was like a building that was just vacant, that was wanted to just go back into use. Have there been?
I thought we had.
The same use?
Rock City was a change of use.
That was change of use, yeah, yeah. But it was two years vacant, right?
So what, what he's saying is, like, let's just use a coffee shop or a coffee roaster and then they decide, we're gonna take a hiatus and then come back in two years. And then they were vacant for two years, they should come back.
And say ma- maybe in the meantime, we changed our ordinance to say coffee shops aren't allowed there.
Yeah, I guess, I guess under that, under that example though, they'd have to, like, they'd be applying for a permit and then they would get triggered or something.
Yeah.
If they just turn the key and open the shop back up.
Right. No one would be the wiser.
Yeah.
I mean. Right, kind of, kind of what Sam is to like.
I mean.
Two years?
So, I mean, I, the idea behind this is that, you know, like what we just saw, right? That thing's been sitting for a year. It's gonna be used for the roughly the same uses it's gonna be as it was before.
Had it been two, we'd have to do a full review.
That is correct.
No change of use, just because of two years.
Just because it's been two years. And like, like you said, if it's the same owner, they're gonna walk back and just open the door and keep going again. Like, that, that's its own pieces. This is because, you know, these types of things are gonna be things that sat for years and then sold.
Yeah.
And they're like, I just want to open it back up to what it was, but a different new, different owner, same spot, same everything, just new guy that owns it wants to take a swing at it. We have an opportunity to kind of keep that window a little bit wider.
Yeah.
To make sure that even if things turn a little bit for us, that we have a little bit more you know, it's slightly biz- more business friendly in terms of, you know, trying to keep things going through without having to have
Right, I mean, think of.
Full reviews for things that are the exact same use.
Twenty twenty, when a lot of things closed as a function of a pandemic, if they stayed closed for too long, they'd have to overcome this hurdle to reopen.
Yeah, I mean, under a change of ownership, yeah.
Yeah.
So this is where I'm gonna turn to you and say, do you have any harbor around that we're moving one way or the other? And I'm sure the code enforcement guys might have something they want to say around that too, but like, I can't see anything moving fast enough. You know, I, I wouldn't put ten years and I wouldn't put five, because a lot of things change in those timeframes, but.
Right, I, I wouldn't, I don't know if I would suggest you changing it because if you increase it, then it takes the pressure away from selling it and getting someone else in. So if it, it's a tool that we can use by saying, hey, by the way, you know, you got less than X amount of time to get this either sold or utilizing it or you're gonna go back through a full site plan review.
Yeah.
So. It's a leveraging tool as well.
Well, now, this is the other side of that coin, right? Like, I get that. So what do you think, guys? Sticks or carrots?
Is that a common number, two years?
Yeah, it's pretty common.
I just wonder in terms of a safety inspection, a building that's been abandoned for a couple of years.
The code enforcement, you can always expect.
Right, okay.
I was gonna say, like, any, any kind of occupancy is gonna have to be cleared, especially if they change ownership and come up with a new business.
Since that's the case, then I would prefer a carrot to a stick.
So that's three years or?
I think the way it reads is fine.
Yeah, I guess I don't really have an opinion either way, so. I'm inclined to just leave it.
I'm inclined to leave it.
Yeah.
Haven't really thought about it enough and, like I said, we haven't seen this, right?
If we don't, if we don't have, you know, if we don't have a reason to change it, don't change it. We don't have an example that's, oh, this is a bad.
It's not like we know of people who have been turned away.
No, yeah, no, no, I don't, I don't have.
Oh, no, yeah, it's not.
Don't have an example of it.
Yeah.
It's just a matter of if, if it does become a problem in the future, it takes putting it on a ballot, getting it through, you know what I mean? If you want to make that change, whereas we have it right now, we're on that piece, it's already highlighted with a change in it. Just an opportunity more than anything, that's all. But it sounds like we're gonna leave it at two years.
You okay with that?
Sounds great.
We can revisit it again.
Anytime.
Okay, so that's thirteen oh three.
Yep. So the next one is the thirteen oh five performance standards. There aren't any amendments proposed in it. It's just more of a, we kind of have an interesting opinion about, like, what, what do we do with it? So I don't know, Jeff, if you wanted to talk about it.
I mean, this to me reads as a narrative.
Yeah.
It's just basically a helpful thing when you're under site plan review, that these are the things you're gonna have to look out for.
Yeah.
But in terms of, I'm fine with either keeping it or removing it.
Yeah.
But I feel like it's a hindrance in our review to go through this section and then go through it again in detail in chapters eight hundred and one thousand.
I, I'm, I'm in complete agreement with you there. I, I do think it's just an overview. I don't think you need to go through it and then do it again.
Right.
So um in our review, we don't have to. It's more for the applicant. It serves really no official purpose since it's already done elsewhere.
And the, I guess the only thing is sort of for record keeping purposes, we've got things written here twice perhaps. Because it's like, you know, soil erosion control. It's like, you're gonna have to, if you make a change in one thousand or I think that's in eight hundred, um, you're gonna have to make it here as well if it's a big change.
Yeah.
So you're gonna have to do it twice.
Right.
And I don't know, I mean.
Any concern about, oh, go ahead, Tom.
But by the same token, I would, I would have kept, I would keep it because while we're interested in, in our operation, this is a book that people go to to find out what they have to do.
Right.
And they're typically going to go to the section that they need.
Right.
And read it. And here are all these nice, interesting notes to tell you important things about this section. You shouldn't have to depend on having read the whole uh L U O to, 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 to make sure that you've seen all of that. We could simply avoid this in our process by, by a flow sheet that says if you've done this one, you don't have to do it this time. That's all, I think. But I would, I keep it there in terms of ease of, ease of use for the, for the average citizen. Who might have to go to this or the average developer.
Yeah.
Uh, who might have to go to this.
Do you think that they should be pointed to those sections though, eight hundred and one thousand, or just their existence?
I don't know the psychology that would tell me that, that, um, you know, a simple thing that says, oh, you should also see it in chapter three hundred is as good as, there it is, right there. So I don't know.
I guess in some places, like vehicular access should comply with the management standards of eight oh three and eight oh eight. It's like, there, it's not really being a narrative either. It's just kind of like, go over here to look at that thing.
Yeah, no, I was gonna say, like, before I got to that part was, you know, the only concern I would see, like, I understand that neither desire to pull it out there, but would we have a, would we receive lower quality applications as people were not quite as clear of what it was they were supposed to put in and where? You know, this does a pretty good job of laying it all
Yeah.
into place. If you're trying to find all that piece, now obviously the ones we get from Garland and Dorsky, who've been doing them in this town forever, are gonna be fine. But, you know, we've also had a handful of smaller players come through in this last year and the more the state is pushing for that, you know, the smaller ones are gonna be around. It might be like two, three units versus thirty. Yeah, I mean, I, I know it's onerous, I guess, on our part in terms of have to double up on it, but I think like, if, if we can change our our procedure
Yeah.
to handle it differently, I think keeping this particular piece in the, in the L O E or L U O where it belong, like where it currently is, is worthwhile to the people looking at it.
Okay. Tom, Rob? Keep it, keep it. Alright, it sounds like we're keeping it.
Good.
Alright, I mean, I've already adjusted our process so that we don't go through thirteen oh five.
That's right.
So the flow chart that you may have a copy of, just ignore that thirteen oh five part because we do it elsewhere.
Well, we depended on you to do that.
Yes.
Alright, which one's next?
Nine hundred.
What?
Oh, that's a fun one.
Yeah, this one.
I'll wait for three hundred.
Yeah, three hundred, I figured we'll do after.
Saving the best for last.
Yeah, saving the best for last.
Right, buckle up.
Right.
Um.
So that's confusing, Orion, that first one.
Yeah.
Because, okay, so retail sales and services shall be within two hundred and fifty feet of Route one and shall be less than ten thousand square feet in size. So we're in the Harbor Village District. It barely touches Route one.
Yeah.
So what the hell does that mean?
Well, hold on a minute, let me um pull up. I don't know what it means, it's just what it said. So what I, what I did with.
You took it out of the table.
Yeah, well, the ta- Yeah, well, the tables in nine, seventeen to nine eighteen have notes, well, notes. Are good intention, but it's also kind of a. A lazy way of, of, of doing it, if I'm speaking frankly.
Right.
It, it, i- if there's gonna be additional, whether it's restrictions or allowances, that needs to go into that particular chapter of nine hundred, so that zone. So. This one, B, it's not something I created, I pulled it from, what is it, nine, the notes of nine seventeen. Number five, so notes, G notes on nine seventeen, number five, retail sales and services shall be within two hundred and fifty feet of Route One. And all that stuff, and then if we look at note five and where that is.
Where's it cited?
Where was note five at?
I couldn't find it. Like, I couldn't find where note five actually was cited, because. I mean. Maybe that's why it's confusing, cuz it doesn't actually apply to anything.
No, I, I, I thought I saw it, and that's why I put it where I put it.
No, you put it in every section.
Oh, well, maybe. Why did I do that?
Hmm, that's why we gathered this panel to have you here today.
And also, what does it mean?
Oh, you know what?
What are we trying to do?
Actually in. Definitions.
Knew we'd get here.
Yeah, 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 let me, let me, before we get into the definition conversation, let me just check something. What was that, it was retail sales.
Yeah, retail uses down there.
No, but what, what's that?
Oh, it's three hundred definitions. That's three hundred definitions.
I can't read that.
Okay.
Section three hundred.
Yeah, three hundred.
Definitions.
That's all I wanted, no.
Okay, and, and to answer you honestly, I don't know why I put that in everything. Retail sales, whoa, whoa, hold on, retail sales, let's see, it's right.
No, you're absolutely right, it was a note on the bottom of the table. Nine eighteen, but I couldn't find where that note was referenced from. So it was never cited from anything.
Oh, oh, okay, I don't think I put it in everything, let me check, nine oh one, nine oh two, so if you look at the table, commercial retail. It's allowed in nine oh one, nine oh two. It's not allowed in nine oh three, nine oh four. It's in nine oh six, nine oh seven, not in nine oh eight, nine oh nine, nine thirteen, nine sixteen. So, nine oh three, I didn't put it in nine oh three, I didn't put it in nine oh four. That's why I did it the way I did it. So the retail use is allowed in nine oh one, nine oh two, nine oh six, nine oh seven. Nine oh nine, nine thirteen, nine sixteen, so I took that note and put it into each of those.
Yeah.
So, that's what I did.
But what does it mean? Retail sales and services shall be within two hundred and fifty feet of Route One, even if they're on Route ninety, like, how, how do they get that?
So, that's, that's the conversation, so what does the note mean, do we keep it, do we not? I, I'm, I, this is more of a conversation bit here.
Yeah.
I moved it for clarity, cuz it doesn't make any sense.
I also, a problem with that issue, because. Does that mean that the entrance to the building has to be within two hundred and fifty feet of Route One? Does it mean the entire building has to be within two hundred and fifty feet? Does it mean the sales and retail part of the building has to be, what does it mean for, for, that it has to be within two hundred and fifty feet? Of Route One, Route ninety, whatever Route is.
Be the building? No. So, it doesn't make sense for nine oh one, since it's Route One, right?
Well.
Or nine oh, a lot of nine oh seven, nine oh six.
Doesn't really touch Route One.
Right.
So it's kind of irrelevant.
So I'll remove that.
But I agree with Jan, is that, like, you know, if. If you had an idea for. Something that was retail, and it happened to be located on Route One, you still wouldn't have clarity as to what you need to do within the two hundred and fifty feet. Like, if you wanted to put something in, toward the back of the lot and have the parking in the front. It's only satisfying the rest of the ordinance, like, where, where's the two hundred and fifty feet defining, is it the entrance, the whole building? The loading dock inclusive, like, what is it? And also, what's the point of it?
What's the, okay, yeah, what's the point? I mean, I'm, what's it, traffic mitigation or something, but?
I don't know.
It came from the, the, the nine seventeen.
But, but.
Notes.
It's, it's written there under the table, but it's not referenced anywhere.
I, I don't disagree with you there.
Okay.
It's just, it's an interesting note, I don't know, do we delete the whole note?
Wouldn't we put it in today if we? If we were.
I guess I would need to know the origins of the note, like, why is it there, what, what's the point?
Have to ask the framers.
I think they probably, yeah, exactly. I think they just maybe it was to encourage people to build on one and avoid going into. Streets and stuff, like, I, I don't really understand it.
Maybe they wanted it close enough to Route One that they wouldn't have to make long sewer lines, or, or water lines or electric lines. You had to be, you couldn't, you couldn't have a parcel that was a thousand feet deep and put your building back there and expect. Anybody to bring your power or lines or whatever, I don't know.
I can't think of a reason.
Anti-sprawl, perhaps, I don't know.
I don't know.
Well, I mean, if you're trying to recreate kind of whatever this is right down through here, where you have things kind of lined up. There's smaller shops stacked up and the side by side, you know, like, if you're trying to condense. Along that area, you know what I mean, like, and, and like you said, it was one of the things we were talked about during the last meeting, it's how do you get people to slow down in that area between. Route ninety and, uh, you know, Leaker and Greer.
Yeah.
Develop it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I suppose there was, yeah, I feel like, um.
And this is, this is kind of trying to drive that, right?
Rockland essentially did the same thing up by, uh. I think it's any new. Maybe any new construction out in Rockland has to be within. Less than two hundred and fifty feet from Route One, I think that's why, like, the, uh.
For parcels that are located.
What's the donut place, yeah, like, didn't wanna build there or something, because they would have to go closer as opposed to, they wanted to be further back. So, yeah, I, yeah, you're, I think you're right, I think it's, they wanna recreate a, like, downtown walkable.
Yeah, I mean, and, and if we had a bunch of small, less than ten thousand, you know, some of the big box stores, but like, things that, you know, a bunch of little shops stacked along. Route One inside of Rockport, you know, instead of having it just kind of be the. You know, the fire through for, for all the big traffic, like, that would be something that we, we, as a town would desire, I would assume, right? Like, that it's all in the growth zones, and by, you know, putting your, your retail specifically along those corridors. You know, you, you, you get what you're looking for in terms of, of development, I, I. I think we would put it in there, I think it's, it's a little clunky in its wording right now because of the Route One piece versus, you know, we, we do like. Using Route ninety, and maybe it's changing it to Route One or Route ninety, but.
But it should define which parcels, like parcels along Route One, or along Route One and Route ninety.
Well, no, and I think, well, no, and I think this is the piece, this is the, what they're trying to do, is that, like, look, if you have. You want, you wanna set up a retail or service business inside of this zone. And it best be on one of the major roads, it's not, like, you can't build a coffee shop. In the middle of, like, nine oh three somewhere, just on a side road, like, no. Hard pass.
I wouldn't interpret it to be that, it, it is.
I think it's, I think it's saying, if you have. Two acres of land on Route One, you can't put something, you can't put a retail shop. Way in the back.
Yeah. For parcels that are on Route One.
Right, not that.
I don't, you could interpret it in such a cynical way to say that this restricts all retail development to two hundred and fifty feet of Route One. Like, you can't build it anywhere else in Rockport, no retail anywhere else. It has to be within two hundred and fifty, Route One.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's kind of what they were aiming for.
Really? No retail anywhere but Route One.
Well, inside certain dis, inside of certain zones.
But it's named for all the zones, it's just a note underneath the entire table.
I think that's exactly what it means.
Yeah.
Really?
It's exactly what it means.
So you can't build downtown, you can't have retail.
Right, yeah, that makes no sense, I think it's not.
If it's not already here.
Yeah.
I think.
Like, that doesn't make any sense to me, why would you do that?
Well, because you don't want somebody, you know, like, um, buying two houses on, on Pascal, tearing them down and putting up. A McDonald's.
That's not, that's a restaurant.
Well, it's retail.
No, it's a restaurant.
Clothing store, sorry, wrong shirt.
Yeah, but it's also saying you can't occupy any of these storefronts on, on Central Street as a retail.
Well, does it, it covers, it, it, it includes downtown district, the north districts?
Includes all of them.
All districts.
Well, then it shouldn't be that.
That's what I'm saying, like.
I mean, I say, I think that was the point of the note, I think it was, it was, it's a bit ham-fisted, but I think the idea behind it was to try to drive development along.
No, that's not driving development, that's, that's restricting development, that's, that's saying you can't do it.
Unless you're there.
Except here, whereas you could say, you can do it anywhere where it's appropriate, according to the rest of this ordinance. We're just gonna give this one stupid sentence and not explain it at all, and put it at the bottom of a table and see if you find it.
Yeah.
I don't like it at all.
I don't either.
Okay. So I'm hearing to delete the note.
I mean, I, it's, if there was a good spirit behind that note, we don't know what it is, because the note's written so badly.
I do, I, I know the spirit behind it, I just don't know how to word it correctly, but.
Was the spirit parcels of land?
Keep, uh, it, it, it was big box stores.
Yes.
To, and the ten thousand square feet takes care of the big box stores, the two hundred and fifty feet further takes care of the big box stores, most of the big box stores are not. You know, two hundred and fifty feet from the road or within two hundred and fifty feet.
But then you just don't want stores to reserve the size.
Well, they, they.
Go ahead for the front.
They got, they, we already have that provision, the square footage allotment, ten thousand square feet is the maximum you can go within the nine oh seven, so. And two thousand square feet, I think it's.
Do we need it?
We don't need that note.
Okay, I'd like it to be out there.
It is gone.
Anyone have a heart attack on it, or this note being allowed?
Everyone's still standing.
No, I don't think we should be, okay, a little bit more draconian in where we put our businesses, but, I suppose. Let's, let's take it out.
Alright.
I mean, I'm surprised they haven't, I'm surprised someone who didn't want a retail store nearby didn't find that.
Yeah. Yeah. Um, okay, so the next is in nine oh two, there's two of them, um, hold on a second. This moved to nine oh two, so C is a note that was moved. And then B is an addition by me. So the exceptions to building footprint requirements are public, get out of here, no. Uh, are public buildings, public schools, public athletic facilities, and boat storage, shipyard, sales facilities, so. The first part of that up to the boat storage, shipyard, sales facility, that is a common term that we use in other zones. Um, I've added it to nine oh two along with the boat storage, shipyard, sales facilities, because there is a boat storage, shipyard, sales facility. That is within the nine oh two, that is having some. Uh, complications with their site due to the way the ordinance is written and their growth. And they're getting kind of creative, but what they're doing is they're buying up land to then, you know, link it to, to give them the square footage, when. All they wanna do is pretty much put a big building on there, so they can keep building boats. I don't know if we wanna get into the business of restricting certain businesses, like boat building, which there's quite a few in Rockport. Um, to continue their growth? I'm not sure, so I'm proposing it to the planning board, really for consideration of allowing boat storage, shipyard, sales facilities, which is boat building. To have this exemption, along with the other stuff that we normally allow for an exemption. And then I've carried that same boat storage, shipyard, sales facility into the other areas where we keep it, which we'll discuss later.
Is this, is this exception for just nine oh two?
Um, no, nine oh two, nine oh six, nine oh seven.
Okay, everywhere, anywhere where boat storage, shipyards are allowed.
Right.
It makes sense for that type of building to have a exception, because it's not like an intensely used square foot.
Right.
Like, it's.
Right.
Just space, you need a lot of space.
Right, and then also with. Um, there's, uh, anyway, I'll keep the name of it out, there is a, a business that owns multiple warehouses for ship. Of the shipyards, uh, storage, of the such, but, uh, they've got multiple buildings when they probably could have done one, saved them a little money. Increased their operations, um, but because of our ordinance, they had to follow building footprint sizes, so. There are ways that this could benefit existing businesses already.
I guess, like, I'm not trying to be. I understand the position they're in, but it seems like the fact that this is public buildings, public schools, and public athletic facilities. It seems like a carve out for a very specific thing, not.
Public, 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 and then not public. I see what you're saying.
Yeah, and I think that, like.
I mean, we can do a whole new exemption that's not, that keeps it separate from the.
Right, I think. Y- yes, I think it's like. And why boat storage or sales versus anything else, really, if the, clearly the intent was a carve out for public. Buildings.
Okay. It's a good valid point.
As I, the other side of that is that, you know, schools, athletic facilities are, are, have to be larger in order to be able to handle. Like, you know, the population of the school, or to be able to hold a field inside of the facility, or what, you know what I mean, like, certain things are bigger than a cross. And I say this as no longer a person inside of the boat building, like, community, like. They're big.
Totally.
Like, it, trying to get boats in and out of building, you need to have a building that has a twenty foot door on it, just to begin with, right? Like, and to get enough of them in there to be profitable, it's a different story, and so having. An understanding of, of what. What industries require things, so like, things like athletic fields and things like that, and we have things like in places for the M R C.
For boat sales, you need lots of space.
Exactly.
And I think that, this is just, this is just a, a, a remembrance of our history, for Christ's sake.
And I think that's, that's the piece of this, is that it's, you know, it is a little bit of where Rockport came from. I would say, um, if we're gonna put it in, you said nine oh two, six, seven?
And the downtown already has the exemption, sort of there.
Right, because of its entity, so like, that's.
To fifty feet in height, so.
So, I mean, I, I don't think there's any other place that we would want or need to do this, I mean, these, these are the places where we. Those types of facilities are gonna exist, most of them mixed residential, the only thing about this other one is that it's, like you said, village. But our village pieces, you know. We want that to grow.
Yeah.
Do we want it to grow with very large structures in it? I think that's the question. But again, it's, again, it's, it's to keep.
Practicalities are gonna forget it.
Well, I mean, we're, we're trying to keep a Home Depot from being set up assignment in corners, right, like, not. You know, somebody who has, has a very large boat building place that needs to be able to store it and have it all be in one, so he doesn't have to keep putting walls in place.
But that's what this, that, that, that's what this does, it's a car, it's a car for specific purposes.
Uh, but I think that it is, I know the other ones say public in front of them, I think the other ones are, like, it's, it's purpose. Like, the exemption is based on the purpose of it, right, the schools need to be big, athletic fields need to be big. Boat storage and sales facilities need to be big, I don't, public or not, I think those are the, like, when you look at those exemptions, you're. You're not doing it just because they're all for public use, I think you're looking at them because those are the buildings that need to be big. And I, I think that, I, I don't have a problem adding. That to it as a result of it, even though it does not look like it is. Matching the other things that are inside of that exemption, I think it's just a matter of understanding of what those things are.
I'm sorry, I, I went down, I, I had added a, uh, currently boat storage, shipyard, sales, there is a boat building company there. But they are under a different, um, use, but they're growing. But they're growing. Um, so there's kind of a, an issue where they might be turning into a different use. So should we go ahead and allow that or not? They've got, I think, four buildings there now. So should we allow that use in nine oh two? So there, there's that question of it too, for the boat, 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 boat storage, shipyard, and sales.
So that has to be added, is that what you're saying?
Right. It's not a permitted use on the use table right now. I'm suggesting we add it.
As well as make this-
As well as make that exemption. And if the planning board does not feel that is appropriate right now, we can take it out.
So in nine oh two, there's no maximum building footprint for non-residential buildings?
In nine oh two, not listed. Oh, I see what you're saying.
Could we just give it a, a maximum number and cap it at ten thousand or whatever? Because that's the highest it's allowed in the town. So not to-
Under-
Provide an exception, but just to say you're capped at ten thousand.
Yes.
I guess we don't have an issue with the other ones, public buildings, public schools, public athletic facilities, right? That doesn't seem like a carve-out. They're public entities.
I don't know that, I don't know that, um, I mean, public buildings is, is a class of buildings, but, but I think we could just say athletic facilities and we could just say schools. Look, for example, at Center for Furniture Craftsmanship.
Right.
And, and has added several buildings. It takes up more and more space, but it's not public, except that public can go there.
I guess there are different security, security concerns with schools that are public schools than, than Center for Furniture Craftsmanship.
Well, but why does, but why does the security issue-
So they have control of access into the school from one point perhaps, rather than having separate buildings that you have to go in and out of?
But why would that-
But I think this is just, I don't think it has anything, I think it just, I think this, this carve-out is just to make it easier for any event that there was, in one of these districts that they wanted to build a school or something. It wouldn't be-
Correct.
Right.
Correct.
Um.
So I, I, I hear what you're saying, Jeff. I like what you're thinking on the, coming up with a maximum building footprint size. I think that makes sense.
Like, I understand why boat storage requires more space, but I think someone could, with good reason, come to the next meeting and be like, why boat storage as opposed to any number of-
Well, if we had an airport, they'd probably put a hangar in there, right? Because an airplane is huge. Then it requires a big building. But we don't want that big building for just any other use. So we provide a carve-out for airplane, airplane hangar, right? It's just a function of, like, what it's going to be used for.
Yeah.
It doesn't seem like a carve-out for a special interest. It's just like, you've got a big thing, it needs a big building.
Well, but it's, it's a carve-out for a special interest that the town has an interest in, as opposed to a carve-out-
That's true, too.
As opposed to simply allowing any building anywhere, um, and, and, and you get, um, Home Depot.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah. We have, we have the right to say what we want.
Yeah.
Also, again, this is all gonna go to vote, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
So if the town doesn't want to have that stuff there, they are very within their rights to vote against that.
Yep.
So like, this, this isn't us making these changes, you know, writ large, like, these are-
I guess we just have to be, be careful that we don't. It's how we slice and dice these changes for a vote, because if you were to say to the town, like, vote on this whole thing, and enough people are vocal that they don't like this one little bit of it, they'll vote the whole thing down.
Well, well, like-
So it's up to Orion, like, how do you divide this?
Yeah. So like, maybe, maybe the change of views, like, for nine oh two, we're adding a permitted, or I'm suggesting, and if y'all agree, maybe that's a separate question. And then the town can say, yeah, we're okay with it or no.
Yeah. No, I mean, like, I mean, I don't know exactly how this all works, and I'm not gonna tell you guys how to put together your ballot, but like, you know, definition changes together is one, just kind of like, but saying, look, everything in the land use ordinance, all these different changes, all is one shot. I mean, that's, it's not giving people a choice either, you know what I mean? Like, it's just a big long thing. It's not, it's usually fairly confusing, like, in terms of trying to list everything that's written in there. Uh, so if we're gonna make anything that is substantive of the, like, these, a lot of these are cleanup, but if we're gonna make a change like that, yeah, I know, it makes sense to pull it out just so that it's-
Right.
You know, you don't have to completely start over on all the other things that we know we need to change.
Right.
But- I guess, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Rob.
No, I guess, here's, here's where I'm butting up against this. It's like, I think we see this and we think Rockport Marine, like, lovely boat building facility. I don't know if we have other, you know, there are other places around.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
On the flip side, it's shipyard sales. Someone could, like, we're also letting in potentially just, you know, like, a-
Western Marine.
Right. Or someone, you know-
Or Hamilton.
Mm, mm, right, or something that resembles more of like car sales than traditional, like, boat building. If we're, if we're, if this is about kind of preserving the, the history and, you know, industry that built Rockport, I don't necessarily think, like, boat sales and leasing is the same as boat building.
No, for sure.
And I think that, like, someone could take exception to one and not the other, and just, it, I don't know, to me, it seems like a bit of a carve-out. Not necessarily, like, opposed to the idea of it. It just seems like a weird-
Well, I guess we have an actual, I mean, Orion's not naming, but he's got actual testimony that, like, the ordinance is stifling a certain efficiency of building for boat builders. So there are actually, like, boat builders-
Mm-hmm.
That are having to do some work around our ordinance in order to grow their business. So we know that's a-
So why don't we just call it boat storage slash shipyard?
We can. So, so-
Changes our definition piece.
Yeah, give me a second. Um, do one last one?
And then the other side of that, while, while he's looking for his piece, uh, you know, I mean, like, you know, Yachting Solutions is on the corner of ninety and one, right? And like, that's, you know, the old market basket.
Yep.
Lots of, you know, power boats sitting out front with Big Four sales signs on them.
Mm-hmm.
You know, so I'm guessing that's, something like that is what you're trying to dodge, having happened in, like, the Village area of, like, where it's more car sales looking thing, but like, those, those types of businesses require location, right? Like, like, the reason that other thing works is because it's on the corner of ninety and one, right? Like, there's, you wouldn't put a, a car dealership in the backwoods of anywhere, right? Like- Right, and I'm not, I guess my point is like, okay, well, why doesn't the next, you know, person wanting to, why wouldn't the next person wanting to put up a car lot, look at this and be like, what is this for, you know? Like, well, I, I think boat building and shipyard, or boat storage and shipyard is much different than sales. And I think, I think the general public could look at this and be like, it doesn't really make that much sense. But if you build boats, you gotta sell them.
Yeah, yeah, and it's, it's, it's part of the deal.
Nice, so the, and sales part. Like, you can't be a boat builder without having sales as part of your model.
Otherwise, you keep getting more and more built boats.
Sure, but-
And they stay there.
But that wouldn't change the definition of, of boat storage, shipyard, would it?
It does, because it's got sales in it. Boat storage, shipyard, sales. Oh, that's the, sorry, I'm looking at the definition. But it does have sales in it. It says boat ship sales.
I mean, I don't feel, feel strongly either way. I just, it just seems like a- Well, I mean, so, I, I think what, like, the piece you're worried about, like, I think right now inside the Village, I don't know, let's, let's see. Yeah. If you're in the, uh, in the Village Zone, like, car repair and, and, and sales are, are not permitted uses. Right? Like, so you, you know, that place that's, you know, uh, crossing the green thumb, even though it's big garage doors and a lot of space, and it's right there on the grid, like, you couldn't turn that into a car repair shop and use car sales. Like, that's not permitted use. Right? And that's one of the things that they wanted to keep out of the, you know, I mean, like, I get, you know, we have different zones for these different things across, right? Like, having somebody who's already in one of those areas and then bumping up against a different piece, like, it's a very different piece than trying to just all of a sudden allow certain uses in a place that are likely to have, you know, a different effect. Because like I said, we do this all the time, right? It's all permitted uses. Like, when we, when we shift something zoning, you know, like, when we're, we had split lots and we're cleaning them all the way over to the, to one or the other, we realize that it's all right, it's now all permitted uses for that zone, right? Like, and I get what you're saying by, hey, you know, you could end up with a Hamilton Marine in the Village Zone. Do we want that? You know, like, I, I don't, but I don't think the Village Zone anywhere would be able to support that style of it because it's not in anywhere. Like, this works because it's, he's not doing a lot of high-volume builds and, and retail sales, right? Like, it's, he's got a space. He's storing boats. He's building boats. But he's bumping up against the, the edges and- I also don't know who we're talking about, so like- That's, that's fine, and I know we're, we're not gonna specifically name it out in a cross, but, but just understanding that there, we have people who are not directly on the water, and this is what, like, what Orion was saying. Rockport Marine's right on the water. They have, we have special conditions for the downtown district that allows, you know, uh, larger buildings, taller buildings for marine use inside of that district, right? Like, that was, that was part of an ordinance change from, or a zoning change from many years ago that the town voted on. So those, how that, what, what we were saying was part of this, is that the town has people who will fit that kind of definition in places that aren't directly on the water. And they're running into problems as a result of that.
They're just, well, they're just do, they're doing it, but in a less efficient way.
Exactly.
They're building multiple buildings, right? Rather than one building that could have contained, like, more operation. They'll just build two and build them next to each other.
And there's nothing that, there's, is that they can't come to us and ask for an exemption?
Not, not for, if it's not a permitted use, that would be pretty difficult to do.
Right, like, we, if we wanna make a change to permitted use, we have to ask the town to vote on it.
Yeah.
So we can't just make a waiver on that in the middle of a meeting.
It's different on, like, you know, the ordinance is allowing the use to exist, but it needs to conform here. And then they say, well, I, I would love to, but it's not gonna fit for whatever reason. Can you waive that requirement? Yeah. But if you're asking to waive the non-alignment that you use in that zone, well, no, because we allow it over here. So you have to go over there. So.
But was your, was your question, Rob, whether we might-
It's just a footprint requirement.
Right. Was your question, Rob, whether if it is a permitted use, a, a non-prohibited use, and they want to exceed the maximum footprint, that they could come to us and we could allow-
Right.
That was your question?
Yeah.
The exceeding of it?
Oof.
I mean, that's a, that's a, you know, our discretion outside of what the ordinance spells out.
I, I would say that that one would be within your discretion.
Yeah.
Would that have to go to the zoning board appeals as well?
Uh, no, not necessarily. That one's like, if it, if it goes into the setbacks, then it needs to go to the ZBA. But for that, not necessarily.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I don't understand why, like, we've had people come and say, hey, this doesn't, you know, whether it's, uh, I, I don't, not naming specifics, but people have come to us and said, if this, this doesn't conform, can I get an, an exception? And we've been willing to listen to that argument. So I guess I don't, it, that seems like the way to go, rather than-
Write it into the ordinance.
For me, but I am also one vote, and I don't really feel that strongly. So, like, if everyone else wants, let's just vote. I don't, I guess we're not voting on each of these.
We're not voting. I mean, it just, it's basically whether we-
But if four, if you four are, don't care, then let's just put it in and move forward. I'm not gonna, I, I don't feel so strongly to, like-
Do you have thoughts, Tom?
Well, I know we've run into this kluge where you can have buildings connected by a connector. And I remember, remember the gymnastic-
Oh, yeah.
Thing?
Yeah.
I mean, that was, he was like, this doesn't make any sense. And I, I sort of agreed with that. I said, you know, you need a building, excuse me, designed for the use to which it's going to be put. And if, to have a whole series of little buildings with connectors actually looks to me, to my mind, is aesthetically worse than having a building which follows its function.
Yeah.
That's just a kluge. I mean, the whole concept of zoning is carve-outs. I don't understand why making a carve-out is a problem.
I don't necessarily think it's a problem. I just think it's, uh, ripe for anyone to just be like, why is this a carve-out? And, and then you have to explain.
I think, I think-
Okay, then let's move on. Then let's move on.
The joy of being part of the board is that you don't have to explain it anymore than you have to explain why this area is a rural area.
I think, I think someone would want to have an explanation of, like, why the gymnastics place, a gymnastics place, which also requires a large amount of space, like, okay.
If, if we were, say, like, the home to, I don't know, the, the most famous gymnastics competition or, you know, the source of, like, gymnastics dynasties or something, we might make a carve-out for gymnastics things. Rockport is, and it's the, our, um, comprehensive plan does say that we're kind of a, a town that goes to boats and goes to ships and, like, that's important to us. So that's like, why, why we provide the carve-out. It's not arbitrary. Like, we like ships. It's, like, that's what the, the comprehensive plan says, is to value this. Okay, so are we in favor of it, it seems like?
Yeah.
And Rob's, you know, skeptical but okay with it?
Sure.
So we're okay with the exception to the building footprint size to include the boat storage?
Did you just add a max?
How would you prefer it?
That's what I thought we were talking about.
We, we, we didn't, we didn't say which one we were talking about. We were just trying to see whether it was worth to put a carve-out for ship sales, building, repair, leasing, whatever.
You don't have the same demand for that kind of thing that you have here.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I think, I think it makes sense.
Yeah.
Because this is, you know, this is the shore. People have big boats. There's-
Hey, Orion.
There's a reason for that.
Yeah.
While you're writing that out.
Right there.
Yeah.
Janet said earlier, and I kind of agree, do you wanna take the word "public" off of the front of schools and athletic facilities?
I would.
Sure.
So what's the argument for that?
So if we wanted to make an exception for a private athletic facility.
Was, was this in here before? Was, was this exception here before for any, anything?
No.
Okay. So if, like, an MRC-like thing wanted to have a single entrance and a pickleball wing and a hockey wing and a tennis wing all under one contiguous, in one contiguous envelope, it's a private athletic facility, it should apply to this exception as a private entity, is what I think you're saying.
Right.
Like, it should be eligible for it.
Right.
Yeah.
And then same with schools, whether they be private or public.
Yeah.
If you're putting a school in, it needs to be big enough to handle a student level of-
Moreover, our definitions don't differentiate between public schools and private, it's just that schools.
Exactly.
So.
Even better reason.
Yeah. But public buildings, perhaps, is-
Public buildings, for sure. I was just saying, just take "public" off of schools and athletic facilities.
Yeah.
That's all.
Okay.
I like that.
Good.
Okay. Moving down the-
Good.
Line.
You take the "and" away from athletic facilities if you're adding boat storage at the end.
Thank you.
There you go. There you go.
Um, okay, 906.
And so that will appear everywhere, or?
Uh, in 906 and 907, um, and I think it does not in 913 for the reason of what's in 913 is more, well, let me check, hold on.
Can you go in 913?
You're there.
Yeah, I'm there, I just didn't add it in, and I didn't add it in because of the boat. Shipyard, which is what I was focusing on, is, it allows for more, it, it takes care of that same concern.
Let's scroll down a little more.
Does, does this mean, does this mean the exception is automatic? Or these are potential exceptions?
Automatic.
That need to be reviewed?
No, these are automatic.
They, they all need to be reviewed, but they're automatic exceptions. I mean, all those proposals would be reviewed by us.
Yeah, okay.
Anything that falls under those categories would still be reviewed by us.
Well, there'd be no maximum lot coverage, so that kind of gets to the footprint, but we can add a footprint.
Or just, you know, have that same, put that same piece in for shipyard, whatever, you know, that same...
Yeah, related uses, maximum...
Just move it to 913 as well.
And how about, how about, and exception, um, may be made for building footprints? And the maximum building height shall be 50 feet, measured from the highest point of the original grade adjacent to the foundation, what do you think of that?
Don't know why there's a three there. Oh, is that all three? Oh, it's just formatted, it's funny.
Yeah, the formatting's messed up on this, I'll have to fix it.
If it really is, there's an exception maybe made for building footprint.
Shall be, maybe.
Well, are we saying that the exception may be made, like, we may, as to Tom's question, allow the exception, or are we saying that an exception applies to...
Yeah, I guess, it should be, it should apply, uh, so how did I have it warranted? Exceptions to the building footprints for those uses, so 913. Maybe it's in front of exceptional building footprint for...
Exception to building footprints of what?
For marine-related uses.
Yeah, but what exception?
Exceptions to building footprints, um...
You mean, accepting the building footprint requirement?
Hmm, I see what you're saying.
Building footprints?
Yeah, building footprint requirement.
Have no maximum, essentially?
Exceptions to building footprint.
Okay.
Requirements. Does that read okay?
Kinda. Full alternative standards, there shall be no minimum setbacks, there shall be no maximum lot coverage. Exceptions to building footprint requirements for marine-related uses and maximum building height shall be 50 feet measured.
It should start, I think, at four...
It still should be for, for marine-related uses, yeah, so the, because that's the only thing that these things are in that district that are, that have that, that apply to it. So the maximum building height should be 50 feet, measured from there through...
Yeah, there should be no building footprint requirement.
Good.
There we go.
Yeah. That's better.
Thank you, Ryan.
You got it, thank y'all. All right.
All right, you're adding the 40 rooms.
Yeah, that was just a note carried up, so...
Yep, from before.
Yep.
I don't know if y'all...
Yep, good, don't wanna talk about that.
Nope. Moving on.
All right, so going back up to 906 then, um, so that was discussed, uh, public athletic facilities, should I take out "public"?
Yes.
Same thing with schools.
Same with schools. Okay. Um, okay, um, so this is a note that was moved over, and then I've edited the note to make it not repetitive. I don't know if y'all have any issue with that?
No issue.
Okay, and then restaurants, um, there are, there's already one in the 906, y'all may be familiar with it, I won't keep it unnamed, it does have a drive-through. Our definition does not allow drive-throughs within Rockport. There are a couple of businesses that want to come in, and they've identified parcels that are within this limitation, so, and in that zone, uh, but they wanna do a drive-through. This is a new...
New note.
This is a new note, or a new exception. So what I'm proposing is to allow drive-throughs within restaurants, within the 906, that are within, that have frontage on Route 1 and are within 1,500 feet from the town line.
What is this, 1,500 feet from the town line?
Rockland.
Or Camden.
Town line or Camden, on Route 1.
So, well, like, that's where the...
Your backyard.
Right now, there's a Dunkin' Donuts that has a drive-through that used to be, but there's, so there's, that's inside of Rockport, right, like, and that's inside of 1,500 feet of the town line, which is, you know, the other side of Buck's Cannibally Place. So that's down in here, so there's good, there's a handful of lots in here that could, that could satisfy that.
Or if anyone were to ever replace Dunkin' Donuts.
Right, well, I mean, I guess it's...
And they would be...
That's grandfathered.
That one got grandfathered across, and like...
Yeah, no, but...
So that's why it was grandfathered.
Correct.
Okay.
Right, so there's, there's that, and then there's a small section up here by the country inn, like, anything ended up in there. My personal preference would be to make that line longer, but if 15, if 1,500 feet covers the...
I'll put it this way, what I was comfortable presenting to the planning board was 1,500...
Square feet?
Or, that's not square, 1,500 feet within the town line on Route 1 within 906. But I'm not opposed to more.
I love having this all on scale, do you know how far...
Well, this is scale there.
Yeah, that's, uh, pretty much, so nine, and on the Rockland line, that's pretty much all of 906.
Because that, that's 15?
Yep.
Oh.
And then if you go up, it's all the 906, and then it goes into, so it would be all the 906 in the, in those two.
And we're not doing anything for 907?
No way.
No.
No way, is that all of it?
Yep.
I mean, 1,500 square, 1,500 feet, it's like a quarter mile?
Yep.
So if I look at one of these...
I did a measurement.
If I look at one of these little ticks at the bottom of the map, that's, that's only half of that portion of 906 zone.
Yeah.
Perhaps the scale is wrong.
There's a possibility it could be, but I doubt it.
Would anyone object if I tilt this a little bit, or do people like this?
Oh, yeah.
Why, how do I get, see this thing, and then I realize it's...
Well, 'cause you're not in your normal spot over here next to me, man, I'll say whoever it is.
You just gotta rotate the wheels maybe a little bit.
To help.
Thank you.
Oh, wait a minute.
But he's got, he's got some fun stuff.
Hold on a minute, oh, you're right, you're right, you're right, I was, I was looking at, oh, get off of it. So it will go 1,500 feet.
Just choose feet.
This Aqua is the 906?
Yeah.
You're right.
There it is.
Okay, now if I turn on this other layer, here you can see what it looks like underneath, so, right here is the current drive-through.
Yeah.
And then all these parcels up to the...
VIP and the shoe, super shoes.
So, there's a motel hotel in kind of here.
Yeah.
There's other parcels that are here, we can extend this up. My initial proposal was to hear, and I was kind of contemplating these areas, but, um, the 1,500 is not beholden to this. That's what I felt was appropriate to...
5,280?
That's a mile. That's a mile.
Yeah, no, I, I, I gather that, guys, I'm saying, as opposed to 1,500.
A mile would be a bit.
What is going on here, actually? What are we, what are you, what is, what are you measuring, what are you...
This is the planning board meeting for the town.
Yes, I understand.
Well, we're trying to figure out how far into the town we wanna allow drive-throughs. In, in 906.
Drive-throughs are the word that I, that I was missing.
Okay.
So we have, we have a, a rule, an ordinance against drive-throughs.
Right.
And we are deciding whether or not there's gonna be a soft territory, a, a, a soft, um, an area of no enforcement, like a no-man's, no-man's land.
Well, we're, we're turning it into a legal zone.
Turning it into legal.
Yeah.
Yeah, in other words, it's an extension of Rockland or an extension of Camden.
Is that what you're saying?
A mile would give you all of it, but if you come up here...
1,500 feet from Rockland is why we're doing this.
Because there are...
So it would stop the moment you got out of 906. Well, or no, or would it give you...
Portions of the town along Route 1 that are near Camden or Rockland.
And we are looking so desperately for more tax money that we are going to change our...
That would open this up here.
For things that we have always thought we don't want.
Orion cited that it exists, it exists as grandfathered in, in one location within that 906 zone.
So once, one thing is grandfathered in, you're gonna allow other things to be built.
That's what Orion is with this, um, change to the ordinance, proposing that it would allow like-things nearby the thing that already exists, right? Yes.
Yeah, so we've got Dunkin' Donuts.
How far is it to get to Main Street from the town line?
Well, I mean, you're in 907 here, so it wouldn't matter, but, um...
Yeah, what's 906 near, on the other side, near Camden?
Yes.
That's just that?
Yes.
How long, how far is that?
So to the 906 end, that's like 0.29 miles, 0.3 miles, or, yeah, 0.3 miles, so 1,500 square feet, I think, is where I got to 1,500.
Yeah, no, no, but so what do you got to?
So to Main, you're at 3,500, 3,500 square feet, or 3,500 feet.
So what is that, where does that put us at the other end of town?
Well, we're only talking about this in the 906, right?
Yeah, well, no, I know that, but I'm saying, like, so the other 906 is like...
It encompasses the whole thing.
The other 906 is a mile long.
No, no, it's not.
Or a half mile.
Half miles.
Right?
It's like 20...
20,000. So 3,000.
There.
Half a mile.
Right, so if we say, drive-throughs are allowed within 3,000 feet,
You would include that?
That would include all the 906 on the south end of town. It would include all the 906 on the north end of town, but it would not unlock the space between...
Yeah, it wouldn't include...
It wouldn't unlock this spot.
West Rockport, or the stretch where 90 intersects Route 1 down to, uh...
Yeah, the ports of Italy.
Yeah, and beyond.
Correct.
There's that little piece there, so like, 3,000 feet, as opposed to 1,500, gives you all of that space down there and gives you all of the space at the top, but without unlocking places where, I don't think anybody here would wanna see a drive-through between Main Street and Route 90 on Route 1.
Yeah, no.
I, I'm against this proposal.
The change?
Um, if you go down Route 1 to the bath area, you'll see an area where they have allowed marijuana shops, and so there are 10 of them, one after another.
Okay.
And what you're doing here is you're inviting 10 more drive-throughs, a drive-through restaurant on every possible piece of land, because once you open that up, they will come, and you can't stop them from coming, because you said, drive-throughs are okay, 1,500 feet into our town. So instead of having a Dunkin' Donuts, you could have a Dunkin' Donuts on McDonald's, a this, a that, a drive-through daiquiri place, whatever.
Is that a problem?
It is for me.
Okay.
Yeah.
I guess when, yeah, I guess when you get further towards, like, hotels that are trying to utilize the views of, of the water and stuff like that, I could see them taking, not being thrilled that we're allowing like, drive-throughs in that, those areas. I mean, like, more towards Dunkin', that's probably a different story, but that's within, like, the 1,500 feet. But if you really go out, then like, it seems like the, seems like the retail or, you know, commercial that's there is a lot different than what's closer towards Rockland.
So we're stretching it out to where there's a shoe store and a VIP that has six bays that run in?
That's the 1,500.
Not, well, I mean, that's...
But you're talking about the entire, essentially the entire 906.
But I won't, I won't...
What does it say, the, the next piece past that, like, well, it's a handful of houses and a Grange Hall.
But see, I, I will, I will...
Then maybe I didn't see, sorry, Jay, maybe I...
I won't, I won't agree to the equivalence of the VIP tire place and a drive-through restaurant. Because drive-through restaurants, drive-through places cause litter, they cause traffic, they cause noise, they cause all kinds of, um...
Traffic calming.
Hmm?
But traffic calming.
Yeah, yeah, there, there, I don't, no, there are traffic, there's a, there's a philosophy.
I think if it's development, then it's traffic calming.
But if it's something that attracts lots of traffic, then how could that be traffic calming?
Because that's, that's what development does. Development that is car-centric actually calms traffic. You can't speed in and out of a McDonald's or whatever at 55 miles per hour, but currently,
No, 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 that's right.
Between Hanaford and Main Sport, you can go 55 miles per hour.
Yes, and so you wanna throw a bunch of, of, of drive-through restaurants in there.
I'm just saying, development, I'm saying, any development.
But, but you're not saying development, Jeff, you're saying allow drive-throughs.
Drive-throughs are part of development.
Drive-throughs are a specific... Why do we even have to call it out? That's what I, I guess that's a...
Because it's prohibited.
What's that?
Because it's prohibited.
Yeah, so, so the alternative is you remove it from the definition, the, the drive-throughs are not allowed, or you provide an exception within that zone.
It's one of the things that keeps us from being Rockland.
Well, I think, I mean, to play advocate for a moment, I'm not advocating this position, but you identified those two areas because they're on the edge of town.
Correct.
It's almost like what Thomaston did with the portion of the town that is essentially Rockland-bound.
Right, and then the, if y'all remember, there used to be like a 906 and then a subset of 906. So there was this whole ideology that, that when you enter into Rockport, it steps it down from that, that, that development right in Rockland. So there's a hard stop right when you get to Rockport, and there's not a lot there, and people don't really know what to do with the 906. You can see the same thing in Camden, hard stop right when you get into Rockport, coming down on Camden. There's a few things there, sure, is it, is it, uh, drive-through restaurants? I don't know, I'm saying, there are some people that are interested in it, it is, it is an investment in the town. Yes, it does change a few things, but do we, do we entertain it?
Well, I was gonna say, hang on real quick, then, the part you're talking about attracting traffic, when we're talking about being on Route 1, like, this is the same arguments about that we had for the, you know, the housing units that are on there. You can put whatever you want there for a restaurant, I don't care how popular it is as a drive-through, you're not gonna notice the difference on Route 1 traffic during peak full hours.
Agreed.
You won't see it.
Agreed, I take that back.
Okay.
I take that back.
Didn't mean that.
And it's not that I'm against development, it's that I'm against drive-throughs.
That's fine.
And so, um, you know. Go ahead.
Is, is, is there an actual, have you actually talked with people who are interested in this kind of thing?
Yes.
So there is an imminent concern, if not like, you know, potential, so, you know, benefit to this change, I say so-called benefit. The merits of drive-throughs, I don't know if, like, we understand them so well, but I mean, I guess you might, as to like how they impact um a busy corridor like Route one.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think Route one itself is gonna have much of an impact. It will slow it down, because you'll see more people driving up, people on Route one will say, well, you can slow down a little bit, and then Main DOT is gonna look at it even further. What are they gonna do with it? I don't know, but it's more curb cuts that go into it. So that standpoint of the traffic, no matter what we do, traffic's gonna just keep increasing on Route one. Main DOT's got a bigger problem with Route one than they know what to do with, but adding those additional curb cuts will slow it down. That will happen. Now, is, would I, would I have proposed this for anywhere in um the nine oh one? No, I would not. I would not, I would not pass muster, I would not propose it in the nine oh two. I would keep it on Route one, I wouldn't even propose it on Route ninety at this point in time. But Route ninety is another potential of where drive-through restaurants could be.
Yep.
But.
Is it specific to restaurants? I mean, I don't know whether drive-throughs.
Well, that was, that's one of the arguments, I mean, you go to the bank, that's a drive-through.
Yeah.
But the definition of restaurant has that clause in it, that it does not allow drive-throughs, so.
That's where you're saying you can get rid of that.
Right.
Is it possible on Route one to to put in a left turn lane?
Yes, it is possible.
Because that would certainly help, because if people have to stop on Route one to to turn left, that will back up traffic, and that will be a problem. If you can, if you can put a a left turn lane there, that would alleviate.
Yes.
A lot of, a lot of.
And that's what Rockland has.
Yes. Yeah, you're correct.
Stops right before you get to Rockport.
Yes, yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
So.
Um so I'd like anybody here to express their disapproval of the change to allow drive-throughs on the northern and southern border to everyone, so. I mean, substantive reasons why.
Where, where is, where is the northern border that we're talking about?
Hanaford.
Okay. So from, so from Hanaford down to Route ninety?
But the bank is actually in Camden, isn't it?
No.
The bank is in Rock, one of the banks, the bank is in Rockport. The bank or savings bank or?
Yes.
Well, Camp, the Camden National branch is in Camden.
So it's, it's down to like Adventure, from Hanaford to Adventure Advertising.
I'm sorry.
From Hanaford to Adventure Advertising.
Okay.
Both sides of the road.
That's the nine oh six.
That's the nine oh six at that end. Yeah, there it is, he's got it for you.
So, Jay, I mean, you've been vocal about disliking drive-throughs, but can you give us some reasons what your concerns are?
Uh, no, my, my concerns, my concerns are I don't like them.
You don't like them? I don't personally like them either. I never.
And I don't like, and I don't like what they, what that type of business has done to a long stretch of Rockland. Because it is, it is, when you have a fast food establishment, it is, it is well-known that the more establishments you have right in that neighborhood, the more business everybody does. So that's why where there is a McDonald's, there was, not anymore, a Burger King across the street. And that's why there's a Thai food place across the street. And and so what I'm afraid of, we have one Dunkin' Donuts, um that used to be a Dunkin' Donuts plus a restaurant.
There's a Taco Bell KFC.
Yeah, Taco Bell KFC. But I think that if we, if we start allowing more um franchisees, we'll see that as a good place to build. We are welcome here, and we can congregate the same type of restaurants, so that we will get all of those clientele's coming to the restaurants. And.
That's, that's a unsavory.
Well, I mean, you.
Contemplation.
Well, you, you say that, but like, that, Rockland stretched that out, and they had there, but like Burger King is out, they've long said and done. Wendy's came and went from that same strip, right, a Tim Hortons came and went from that same strip, like, it, it, that doesn't prove out.
Yeah.
Like those, like, you don't have stacks when people have tried, and they've tried in that area, but how many times they try to put at Denny's where that VIP is? And like, that particular stretch has difficulties.
There's not, there's probably not enough actual population to support that many drive-through restaurants, but it doesn't keep people for dry.
Right.
And so the Tim Hortons stayed empty for a long time.
Right, the Burger King, yeah, it's not the best example, because the Burger King's empty, but.
And the weeds are growing.
For sure.
So, um. Look, there are lots of votes, and I won.
Yeah, well, I would, yeah, but I mean, in terms of what we're gonna put together as a change from the planning board, we can we drive to some manner of consensus as to what we wanna have written into this piece? Do we wanna take off the, you know, the prohibition on drive-throughs together, or written off of the restaurants, or do we wanna put a line?
Well, I think that what Orion's doing is saying he doesn't want to remove it from the definition.
Correct.
He just wants to say, okay, these two areas.
In an, in an area that we already have one grandfathered in.
Right.
So that kind of keep making that more of a conforming one at this point.
Yeah.
So why do we need, so what's the impetus to change the length of the?
Yeah, I think the, I think maybe it's the length at this point, that's.
So you said three thousand goes down to.
Three thousand gives you all of the southern, without and all the northern.
And I think that people will see fifteen hundred and be like, oh, that makes sense, it's, there's Dunkin' there, and it's more of a conforming thing. If we go to three thousand, then I don't know, I think that's.
I don't know, my, my, my original thought was the whole strip down there.
It was the whole strip.
It was, and I thought with what's in that area, maybe I'll propose it to y'all at fifteen hundred, so.
I guess I just feel like that, to me, changing the whole strip would be like proper town vote.
This is.
Yeah, I know, but sometimes we talk about doing like the whole, you know, like a group of changes and stuff, like.
You mean a standalone question?
Probably.
It's too important.
Yeah, I mean, I think that, yeah, I don't know, is.
That's fine.
Obviously wasn't here when the drive-through um piece was prohibited, but people wanted that, I don't know if it's like, I don't, that's just my opinion, I would put it up for a town vote as a standalone.
So similar to the, you know, the boat storage sales piece across, we just wanna pull that.
Yep.
You know.
Separate on those own, that'd be fine.
My, my first take, when I saw that, it just seems like so arbitrary, fifteen hundred feet. Who the heck even knows fifteen hundred feet? Why can't, why can't we choose as a cross street or something and say, south of or north of?
Or if we do three thousand, then it's, why don't we just do the nine oh six?
Well, because there's sections of the middle part of.
A nine oh six on Route one.
But then there's the middle part, we wouldn't wanna put it in, that was a street.
Oh, 'cause it hits.
That gets, that gets, that gets too close to the.
There's too much stuff down that middle strip that we wouldn't.
Yeah.
Again, I, I mean, I'm all for not wanting to have a big stretch of Wendy's and McDonald's next to Bigger Bear and everybody else, right?
It's just too close to the village.
How far is, how far is the, that Dunkin' Donuts from the, from?
About a thousand-ish, maybe?
From Rockland?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, I think you can make a solid argument that, okay, this is like Dunkin' got grandfathered in. It's there, why don't we just do it all, you know, why don't we allow it going towards Rockland? But I think once you like triple that size, then I think it's. I don't know, it's just for us to determine.
Okay, so I'm gonna do a, I'd like to have a straw vote of, should we remove the prohibition of drive-throughs under the definition of restaurants? So all those in favor of removing the, the prohibition of drive-throughs in the definition of restaurants? Nobody, okay, all those opposed? Everybody, okay. So that's, that's out. Um, should we allow a change to allow um uh restaurants within a zone on Route one, undetermined distance um from the la- town line to have a drive-through? Should we allow a change? In favor? Opposed?
I think it would be.
Two to two, okay.
No, 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 I was gonna say in favor.
Okay.
Okay, in favor?
But not the three thousand.
He didn't say any distance.
Say the number.
Okay.
Just some number.
But the number now is fifteen hundred.
Number's not anything right now, there's no number.
There's no number, Tom.
There's nothing.
There's nothing.
Just a prohibition on all of them and one grandfathered unit.
Right, so should we have something, is basically what I'm asking?
Yes.
Some allowance?
All in favor, but having some amount of allowance.
All is opposed. Two, okay.
All right.
So it's up to the three people who are in favor of determining what distance seems appropriate. Because these guys are opposed to it, no matter if it's three thousand or fifteen hundred.
Fair enough.
So the number you would think prefer, some, how would you define where you allow it?
How would I define it?
Yeah, I mean, Tom had a, a suggestion about streets, intersections, distances, fifteen hundred, three thousand.
I think distances are fine.
Okay.
Because that, that particular distance covers the two sections of nine oh six that are up the north and south end of town on Route one.
And what's the distance you think is appropriate?
The three thousand.
Okay. Rob, do you have a?
I would say uh less than that, I think that quite frankly, I'd probably only do it from like Dunkin' and points south.
Okay, zero.
Just at the no, just at the south end, nothing at the north.
From Hanaford south.
You mean Hanaford north?
From Hanaford to the south.
The north of that town.
Yeah. Toward the south. Like, how far from Hanaford do we allow?
I mean, okay, so me personally, I would say, since Han, since Dunkin' is already there, like, it doesn't make sense to, I would say Dunk, Dunkin's and to the Rockland line. I think anything uh more than that, I would probably just say, put it up to a town vote to change the definition.
Well, it's all gonna be up to the town vote.
Well, to include.
But we can't ask the town what.
Drive-throughs and not along, uh.
You have to, it has to be specific?
Yeah.
Right, which I mean, I think this is what we're asking, right, like, we're, we're asking the town on a, on a separate question to have an exclusion zone for drive-throughs at the end of each end of the town. My piece of it is that extends through the nine oh six zone from each end of the town. And that is represented by a three thousand foot piece, which is just easier to demarcate on maps.
So you go to three thousand in the north, three thousand in the south?
Right.
Yeah, you know, I would probably just vote in favor of uh the area where the Dunkin' is towards Rockland, I think like.
But not at the north.
Probably not, I think the speed limit there is around like, is like twenty-five, thirty miles an hour.
That bank does have a drive-through.
Yeah, bank drive-throughs, especially these days, so much.
It doesn't go to Route one, though, it goes back into the lots.
Right, but also like bank drive-throughs compared to restaurant drive-throughs, or like, I don't even, I don't think you could compare the two, especially like in today's banking.
Yeah, and actually, the First National Bank has a drive-through as well. On Route one.
Yeah.
Jeff, can I, can I pull the picture?
Yeah.
Okay. Across from Hanaford, heading south, there's a gas station.
Yep.
There's a motel.
Mm-hmm, yep.
There's a, there's a mini, there's a restaurant with a miniature golf place.
Yep.
Between those, there's a large parking lot where there are now a couple of trucks.
Two trucks, the contractors.
Yep, sitting right there.
That parking lot.
Yep.
Is going to be a McDonald's.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, is that what you want to live in?
Is that what I want to live in?
I have a problem with it, and I don't feel like it's my personal opinion on whether or not that should be a McDonald's has anything to do with our responsibilities as a planning.
Oh, jeez, I don't.
I mean, I think we put it out.
I completely disagree with you.
Well, I get that, but I'm saying like, we look at this piece, we've got a part of there, we, we understand what the businesses are, like, I, we know we want to have more business in this town. We talked about this when the Com- Comprehensive Plan, right, where we're trying to increase the amount of taxable base we have in the town again from the Comprehensive Plan.
Also says that we ought to keep the character of the town.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, and those two ends of the town.
And that does not.
Are nine oh six development, I, I don't understand where this one particular thing, we have it, we have drive-throughs in a couple of different spots that are kind of grandfathered through, one for restaurant, one for bank.
That doesn't make them good, I bet, let's separate banks from.
Well, I understand that, but like, why, whose definition of good and bad are we using?
You have to use your own definition, I speak from, from how I think, you speak from how you think. I'm not saying you're wrong, I'm just saying we're different about that.
Well, and I, and I get that piece, but I'm saying, we're trying to put this up to let the town figure out whether or not they wanna do it or not. I'm trying to craft a question that makes sense for the people of town to be able to cognizantly like make a decision on. And you're trying to make a decision without it going there.
Doodle the signs that I'm gonna have put out everywhere about.
That is perfectly fine.
I know.
But I'm, I'm trying to like, inside of here, in the planning board, I, I, it seems like we have, like, we have somebody that's, that's interested in it. We have an impetus to kind of, kind of make the town be more in areas that we can without changing the majority of the personality of the town. I, this seems to line up with that, those edicts, it seems like we should put it to the town to vote, I'm just trying to put it.
Why do you equate, why do you equate the Camden town line with the, with the Rockland town line? The, the personalities of Rockland and Camden are quite different.
That's not, it has nothing to do with the personalities of the towns, it's just the town line.
I don't think.
I don't.
Yeah, but I think that, I think if you look at the businesses.
Because there's like a.
I guess with the exception of Subway, maybe.
I was gonna say, like, guys, there's a Subway, there's a bakery there, that's, like, it's actually, it would be better if it's a drive-through, because it's got a line out the door from it, like.
Yeah, that bakery. Put a McDonald's next to that bakery, and that changes the, that, you know, that's not.
Well, I'm sure.
You're talking about like, if you, the area.
If you want it to look differently, there's a McDonald's in Freeport that doesn't look like anything else we've ever seen, if you're just worried about how it looks.
I grew up in a town that, that built a McDonald's that doesn't look like a McDonald's, it's still McDonald's. It doesn't, like, and it, and they were careful to only like allow that in a very specific area. We're opening up the entire, almost the entire Route one from uh.
We're opening up six thousand feet.
I think it's a lot, like, it's a lot of, that's a lot. I don't.
They're talking a half a mile on each side of town, that's not opening up all of Route one. And again, I, I just, I just don't think that this is.
Ask the town.
That's, that's what I'm trying to get to, is a question to ask the town, that's, that's the point I'm.
Yeah, and I swear, I think the town's gonna say no to that, and I think that for the, for, for.
In some ways, then the people who are opposed to it should set it up so that it's the most easily opposed to. Right?
I mean, I think if we, if we do three thousand feet each way, then I think, yeah, I mean, if we do, if, if we try to make just more, more conforming lots, then I don't think it's a bigger deal. And if, if you say you're gonna open up uh from like Hanaford to the town line in Camden, potentially for like McDonald's or any other like larger chain restaurant, people are gonna be up in arms. And I do think they'll consider that not conforming to like the kind of quaintness of the town.
I guess I don't, I don't, I don't look at those two stretches of Route one that fondly, and perhaps I'm not familiar with them enough. Like intimately, I don't live on those two stretches of Route one at the north or at the south. I live pretty close to the one in the north, and I go through it a lot, and the south, I drive through it a lot. And uh it does feel very different. And it does feel very different on the Rockport side of the line from Rockland. Like, Rockland does feel like a developed.
Right.
Car-centric environment.
To someone who just passes through, they wouldn't know that Rockland ends and Rockport begins.
Right. And we don't have any kind of prohibition for an extension of that kind of car-centric environment. We just have a prohibition on drive-through. So, it's not like, you know, McDonald's could locate themselves in the north end of town and it'd be fine, they just can't put a drive-through in it. And maybe that would be enough to discourage them from doing it. But another kind of competitor who doesn't rely on drive-throughs could just do that. So, it's not like we're saying, you can't have this, it's just you can't have it with a drive-through. That's the difference. Also, I feel kind of, I, I feel, well, I feel this strongly that the northern end of Route 1 in Rockport and the southern end of Route 1 in Rockport are far too fast driven. I mean, it's just kind of a race from Hanaford to West Street to Route 90. It feels like traffic just tries to go as fast as possible. It's like, oh, we're out of the city, now we can go sixty-five. And it's like, no, it's, you're still in an urban environment. It just, there's nothing calming to make it feel that way.
Right.
So, I think on the northern side, I'm actually comfortable with it because it's like, if something can slow down traffic here, I want it to.
With the traffic, the speed limit does go up. It goes up to forty-five.
It does.
Right, but I don't, I guess I don't find congestion, like, traffic. I don't, I don't equate congestion with traffic, like, true traffic calming pedestrian friendly initiatives. And like, yeah, I don't know, I, I don't, I, I understand that it will slow, potentially slow down cars, but I don't necessarily see it like, I don't think the way that it would be slowing down cars, which is cars forcing, you know, zooming out in front of other cars and forcing people to slow down and a lot of like, just lateral and horizontal movement, I don't think. I don't, I wouldn't call that a reason to develop it. I think if we have an issue like speeds and also like pedestrian issues, then that's an entirely different conversation.
So, the state.
I think, and I think that like.
I mean, the, the conversation, though, is kind of, it's up to the town to have because the State Department of Transportation is gonna say, this road has no development on it and thus the speed limit should be set at a much higher rate than it would be elsewhere. So, the state's just gonna say, like, you guys want it to slow down, you guys have to develop it in a way to like slow down.
I mean, not to mention.
Is that right? And is that accurate?
Like, isn't there an initiative to build, there's initiative to build a sidewalk, like, I think the goal is to make it pedestrian friendly, and I don't think a drive-through makes it pedestrian friendly.
I'm not in favor of anything that's going to take, make it take an hour.
The drive-through encourages people in and out. If it's a restaurant, it's people that are staying for a while and you don't have that traffic going in and out.
I'm serious.
I'm serious.
Tom wants to drive faster.
I drive that all the time.
Wants to zoom right into Camden downtown.
Somebody make a motion.
I mean, we don't have to have a formal motion, it's basically just, do we want this in here or not? And I think, you know, three people have said that it's okay to have something in there, but we're disagreeing on how much is allowed. And Rob, it sounds like you want it on the southern end of town, but not the northern end. Is that right?
It's probably what I would do, yeah.
Yeah. And you're okay with three thousand feet from the southern end?
And the north.
Or the northern end. And the northern.
Yep.
Okay. And I'm, I'm somewhere in between, I'm at both the south and the north, and I think for cleanliness sake, I'd prefer just to include both of those zones so that applicants don't have to, you know, walk down the street with a tape to see if their property is within the number. I mean, I guess that's what you're looking at with the three thousand, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Just making sure I went past.
So, I guess I'm on your side. You guys didn't want it at all, that doesn't mean that you don't get to say which number you would prefer.
Correct.
So, we've got two for three thousand, one for a number that's arbitrary to wherever Dunkin' Donuts is. What, or whatever that number is, not arbitrary, the opposite of arbitrary.
Specific.
Specific.
Can you measure it? Just out of curiosity?
Yeah, it's about, it's about a thousand square feet. I keep saying square, but whatever.
You can.
That's right here, nine hundred. So, this parcel itself, thousand square feet, or, thousand feet.
Okay, does that number make sense, Rob?
A thousand. A thousand feet?
Yeah.
That's from, from the Rockland line to the Dunkin' Donuts?
Yeah, more or less.
Or is that just a thousand feet?
That's a thousand feet to the northern end of the Dunkin' Donuts parcel.
Okay.
Thousand seventy-seven.
Okay. Now, I know where a thousand feet is.
Okay. So, Rob, it's sort of on you, since you may hold the determination on that number, if that's okay, I'm not gonna put it on you.
Again, if you. You're not wrong, right? Like, if, if we don't, if you don't think that this should be in play, and you make that number bigger when, under that piece, like, then it'll be less likely to pass at that point, right? Like, if, if that's the piece of where everybody is, if you don't think that the town is going to want to have anything that's like that, then having that number be larger will keep that from happening. But at the same time, if that number's there, then it includes the extensive of that segment.
I guess I don't wanna, like, I don't wanna get the people in town frustrated and wondering what our intentions are because we're overshooting to try to make a less desirable outcome.
We're on video, they can see what our intentions are.
I know, I, I don't, yeah, well, yeah, I know, but I don't, I don't, I don't think, I don't see logic in that. I don't think making a less desirable outcome is something that we should be shooting for.
I'm trying to get to the piece that, I think it makes sense because it includes both sets of 906 at both ends of town. I, I think that, like, having anything less than that is, like, there's no sense in doing any of this, other than to try to keep Dunkin' Donuts from being just a grandfathered lot at this point, but there's.
So, if the number was one thousand at the southern end of town, you would say, don't do it?
Yeah.
So, you're three thousand, I'm also three thousand, it's inclusive, Tom and Jen are zero, and you're one thousand at the southern end. So, how do we negotiate the discrepancies here?
Well, I mean. I mean, if it's set out as its own question and then went to the board and went through and says, look, planning board, we already like, you know, we wanna put in a question that says, restaurants within three thousand feet of the town line in 906 on Route 1, whatever the wording is exactly.
And then it says, planning board recommends.
Right. And it says, two to three?
Yeah.
Three to two, we get more of the guys here, so we have all seven of us, we can see if it's three to four, or, or doesn't recommend. You know what I mean? Like, like, I suppose if it doesn't recommend, then we, when we get on there.
Well, we don't, we won't go there. Yeah.
That's what I'm saying, it doesn't, it doesn't go onto the ballot, but I'm saying, like, if, it can go onto the ballot as a split.
Yeah.
And that's fine, too.
Select board will also have a vote for either.
They do.
That'll also be on the ballot.
Yep.
And I think, frankly, I think the select board's opinion is of more value than the planning board's to most people.
Well, we're unelected, so.
Hmm?
We're unelected, so they have a.
I know, no, but I'm saying, I just think the select board is very young.
Yeah.
Quite frankly, I don't think this would even pass the select board, but, you know, it's not for us to.
I guess it's important to point out, I mean, drive-throughs are still prohibited everywhere else. It's, it's not like we're removing for the town, it's not like everybody's gonna be like, oh, there's gonna be a drive-through in my street. No, it's two, two streets.
So, do we wanna put this together with a number on it and then have it be under a split recommendation?
Yeah, I think it should be separated from the rest. I don't know how the select board reviews these things, if they say, take this off, like, you know.
You can recommend whatever, and they can say, no.
They can, they can say no, but they'll, they can say no to parts of it. Could they change it?
No.
No. They would just keep it as it is and put it on the warrant article, or they would just not put it on the warrant.
Correct.
It sounds like we have no consensus on anything, so maybe this isn't, unless we table it for the next meeting and then maybe there'll be more people.
No.
Do not have.
Not for November.
No, it has to be on this one if it's gonna be going, cause it has to go to the select board and then it goes to open.
Yep. I guess the next meeting would be for the June ballot, if it's not on this ballot.
Right. So, I don't think we have a consensus anyway to get something before the select board.
Yeah, because you want it to be more or nothing, and you want it to be less or nothing. And these guys want to be nothing or nothing. All right, take it off.
We'll pick it back up later. Come on, get it. Okay, 907, same stuff, I'll get rid of public athletic and public school. The F and G are notes from elsewhere.
Right.
Pull it up. 908, nothing. 909, I capitalize H, M, I, and H for definition's sakes. I'm proposing to take out and not locate it in shoreline zoning because we have shoreline zoning that has all of the restrictions that are within it, so it's redundant. 910, I did not change anything in 910, I don't know if anybody proposed anything in Okay, nothing. 913 has this, we already talked about a little bit of it.
Mm-hmm.
And moved that note over. I did not change anything in 914 or 915.
There's no 914.
I did not change, huh?
There's no 914.
It's a, it's an overlay.
Or was.
What is it?
This right here. Chickawaki Lake Watershed Overlay District.
Oh, okay.
All right, I'm in 916, I didn't change, pros any changes there. All right, 917.
So, you removed all the notes?
I removed all the notes, changed as we discussed, and added permanent there. This is what y'all recommended to have changed.
That's within the definitions.
Same here.
Added some definitions for these things.
Same with this section. Same with this, which y'all have proposed at the last meeting. And then, these are all the notes that have been tucked away into the applicable zone.
Okay.
Dimensional table.
Do you have something?
Yeah, I have something on the table, you know.
Oh, on the tables?
On the table.
In 917 table?
917 table.
What do you got?
Table D, second item, used to say places of worship, is going to say churches.
No, it's the other way around.
The other way around? Fine, then I have to.
Yeah, what happened there?
That's fine.
No, it, it used to say places of worship and your recommendation was to change it churches because we have a definition of churches.
No, 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 we wanted to do the other thing, we wanted to change the definition.
Okay, sorry, sorry, sorry. Okay, gotcha.
Churches are a lot of worship.
Places of worship, go over here. Okay. Sorry about that.
Sort of a self-reflexive definition, said places of worship, places of worship.
Yeah. I'm about.
Yeah.
Okay. So, you have a note here.
I threw in the word note.
Okay.
Because you've written thirty-four feet across the town. Took out the notes. So, go down to my note at the bottom of this document. The current definitions allow for forty-two feet for structures with roof slopes greater than eight twelve for residential or four twelve for commercial structures. So, we really should probably maintain that.
Okay.
And so, thirty-four doesn't, doesn't suffice.
I see what you're saying.
Something carve out, not carve out, but like.
Definition.
Allowance of additional height for.
So, is it, should the building height and all that structure be within the definition? Should that be in the definition?
No, 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 I like that you took it out.
Yeah.
I like that you took it out of the definitions.
Okay.
Numbers shouldn't be in the definitions.
I agree with you there.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. All right, I'm fine with that, that's okay. We can do that. And then, we'll find a way at the next amendment to place it somewhere, I don't know where to place it right now, so we can just leave it.
Place a note?
As a note, right?
Yeah.
Cause it, it, well, no, cause it's based on my measurement. There's a place to put it, I don't like the notes, is what I'm getting at. It's just.
And I'm just adding a new one.
Yeah, I know, I know you did.
You could, you could put the number in the table, so say thirty-four slash forty-two, and then people will scratch their head and say, what the heck does that mean? And they'll have to look at the definition, and then you can say, in the definition, that the larger number reflects for this.
No, I think in eight hundred, like, there's, like, some standard that we have for buildings, and I think if we have like a building height or a building roof, cause we've got building materials, so it could fit somewhere in there.
Mm-hmm.
So, I, I kinda like that, and then we, we can cover it that way. So, if you have a particular pitch, then your building height is actually this.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. So, I don't know where to put that right now, so I think we'll leave the note as is, and then for June, I can figure out how to get that structured.
Okay.
Sound okay?
Yeah. I just don't wanna change what's.
I, I agree with you, and then, anyway, I agree with you. Okay.
But it's basically thirty-four feet across the board, and that, that row didn't, did that row exist before?
This whole row?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that's always existed.
Just for, as a reference, I think Camden's building height definition is, it just basically says that you can add an additional eight feet for lower-sloped roofs.
Oh, okay.
In the definition, so it says eight feet in the definition, I know we didn't want a number there, but they did.
Right, but it doesn't, that's a different kind of a setup. I don't like, I don't like how some of our definitions have, like, limitations, it's like, that doesn't make us any sense.
Okay, yeah, but where you think. I think we talked about all this, right?
We talked about all those.
So it's basically just, you just put it in here.
Right. And then you had, there was a note about nine thirteen and adding and stuff here, I didn't even know where to begin on that, and that might take a little bit more to undo, to put in, for, for, to match this level, um, of breakdown.
Yeah.
So, I think nothing right now, I don't think adding it.
Okay, it's just gonna be unknown, because it's allowed, but.
Well, this, this whole table has always given me a bit of a headache, and it probably is because we haven't really applied it to anything.
Yeah.
So, I don't know if this table, I'm not disagreeing with the numbers in it, but I don't know if this table necessarily exists. Or if, if it, if it changes into something else, but this table's always given me, um, confusion.
Yeah.
So, I'll get rid of these two. Okay, so keep note, add that there. Okay, and that's nine hundred, is there anything else on nine hundred?
Anyone concerned with nine hundred edits here, wanna make some more? I think we're okay.
Okay, now we're in definitions.
What's the first one?
Uh, the first one, if this isn't in alphabetical order, I'll cha, I'll put it in alphabetical order, this is just how we were working on it.
Okay. Golf course looks good to me. Commercial parking facility, so is it, is a commercial parking facility of commercial use, so it's, is that they're repeating that it's commercial, because otherwise it could be like somebody's.
There wa, there's a commercial parking facility use in the use table.
Right, but is, is it clear that this is not like the parking you might have at a multifamily residential building? Or is it? I mean, it's, I would think this commercial parking facility is like a parking lot for charging people to park there.
Yeah, it seems like this is strangely worded. Can't we just be a lot, or any portion of a lot, used whose primary use is for the parking of motor vehicles?
Yeah, but I have one of those in my, my lot.
So, I thi, that last bit, uh, so it's.
Not charging.
Uh, used for parking motor vehicles.
But it's commercial.
For, for a charge.
Oh yeah, for a fee.
For a fee.
So the lot behind Guinea Ridge Farm.
Yeah.
Is being used by the hotel, that's not a commercial parking lot.
Is it being used by a hotel?
It is, that was part of the term.
Are they actually doing that though?
No.
I, I've not heard that they're actually do use it.
I don't think they are.
You don't think they are?
I've, I've not.
Have you ever seen anyone shuttle?
Somebody, somebody, they fixed it up.
They had to, it was, it was, it was, it was a part of the term, they couldn't get their certificate of occupancy in order.
Right.
That had to be finished, so will they use it if needed, yes, they have it, it's there.
So is that a commercial parking?
No, I don't think so, I think it's just additional parking for a commercial facility.
Yeah, we got, like, commercial parking facilities as, like, open to the public.
Yeah.
Anybody could go there, but like, if it's the hotel's lot there, you better be a hotel.
Or monthly rentals, I mean, it could be like downtown Camden has monthly parking space rentals.
Yeah.
That's, that's a piece of property for whom the, the primary use is not parking, the primary use is hotel.
Yeah.
Just because of their not contiguous.
Right, right, right.
Right.
Um, I do think, though, that after motor vehicles, I thought you should insert it so that it would read uh, used for the parking of motor vehicles and/or trailers and accessories.
That said, do we wanna add boats to that as well? Like, what's the?
Boat storage facility.
Oh yeah, I guess boat storage facility is separate.
I guess if it's on a trailer, it could go either way.
Sure.
I had a question on medical clinic definition. I, I, I don't know if there's a technical, I looked, tried to look it up, but couldn't find a technical difference between a hospital and a clinic. But what about facilities for psychiatric or substance abuse, post-hospital rehab, or hospice, where patients live temporarily? Because this says specifically, primarily offers outpatient services, but those are facilities that offer inpatient services as well, but are not, I don't, you wouldn't consider them hospitals because they don't do surgery or things like that. Should, do we need to include something like that, or just saying primarily offers outpatient, good enough?
I think it's primarily, it's not solely.
I think that's probably, I mean, you have to sort of think about when they made that line in the use table. What were they thinking clinics were?
Okay.
And I think they probably were thinking it's like Knox Clinic.
Yeah, exactly, yeah, okay. For fish pure, I'm wondering about kelp and other harvested sea products that are not considered seafood. Could caught, the word caught in here, be defined to exclude farmed fish? Um, and there's, there's, and there's a bit of reasoning behind that, is, is if we limit it to caught, what if somebody wants to, wants to build a, um, a, a fish farm? Out in the harbor or out someplace like that, can we say that they can't use the commercial fish pure because they don't catch the fish, they're growing the fish?
I, I'm, I'm, we can take caught out.
Yeah, by commercials.
Yeah.
Fishing operations.
It's okay the way it is now?
No, no, you changed it.
No, 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 I, I took out caught.
Distribution of fish and other seafood by commercial fishing operations.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. And I have a better definition than you do for agricultural processing. Because I find, I find the definition that's here to be hard, and so I simply said, and this is a question. Does, am I catching the full meaning, if I say, the processing, preparation, and/or manufacturing of products where a minimum of fifty-one percent of the inputs are derived from agriculture as commonly understood?
Read it again.
The processing, preparation, and/or manufacturing of products where a minimum of fifty-one percent of the inputs are derived from agriculture as commonly understood.
Okay.
That's not quite what you said.
No, 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 I, I heard what he said, but.
Because the line, this, where it says, um, fifty-one percent of the agricultural products used for the processing, preparation, or manufacturing shall be derived from the alco, the agricultural use, that clause does not make any sense.
Yeah, not, it, it, it does, but with the other, like, with agricultural use definition being right above it.
Yeah.
And they're just not, they're not in alphabetical order.
I just thought mine was good and, and each faster.
Processing preparation and/or manufacturing of.
With a minimum, with a minimum, fifty-one percent of the inputs.
Of products.
With a minimum.
Where a minimum of, or with a minimum of fifty-one percent of the inputs derived from agriculture.
Hold on a minute, go, go quickly, I'm trying to type up what you're saying. Fifty-one percent of.
Fifty-one percent of the inputs.
The inputs.
Are derived from agriculture as commonly understood.
Sure, as.
Commonly understood.
You know, common usage.
Common usage.
Yeah, yeah.
Is that it?
That's it, I don't think you need any more.
Yeah, that's good.
Anybody have an issue with that for the definition?
Yeah, so.
And then blasting.
Hold on, does anybody have an issue with that definition?
I had one that Jan proposed.
I do not.
I don't.
Okay. Okay, blasting.
Sorry, I.
Go ahead.
No, I was trying to figure out, was everybody just disappeared?
Oh, that's good. There you go.
As an accessory.
We're gonna change.
Used to an agricultural use.
That's the part I get tripped on.
Well, so like, the idea behind this, and this is why we got into it last time, when we started going over this definition in the first piece, was that it was like onsite preparation of, of stuff that you're going through, so you have an agricultural use.
Yeah.
And you wanna like refine it before it leaves your agricultural area, that's what agricultural processing was, is a permitted use, and it's only permitted in certain areas.
What's an example of that?
Let's see, I was gonna say, we'd be breaking down meat, but you have, actually have to send it off somebody to do that, that would be, um, you know, like, if Jeff had huge field behind him that he grew soybeans on, and then wanted to turn them into tofu before they left. Right?
Yeah.
But we, we, we don't allow, I mean, I wanna double check this, but I think the reason why this is set up as such is because it has, it talks about the agricultural use, is that it's not, you can't really set up an agricultural piece that's not connected to a different use, right? Like, you couldn't just put a processing facility out, like, we have areas where you wanna set up industry. Like agricultural processing has to do with processing on.
But that's, but that's what I said, it, it, minimum of, of more than, more than half of the input.
Right, but it doesn't say from where.
Yeah, he's saying it's in the same place that those products are being.
So we need that key as an accessory use to.
Agricultural processing only happens where you grow it?
He's saying that that's what it was attempting to apply to, especially in the nine oh eight zone, I assume.
Yeah.
Then what do you do with the high wa?
No, so that's, it's in nine oh seven, it's, it's manufacturing.
That's manufacturing.
Okay, oh, I see, okay, so this is specific to the.
So an agricultural processing, like, the.
So because of the zone, it ha, it has to be where the farming is?
Well, I think this is what we're trying to go through, like, if you read agriculture or farming in terms of a permitted use, right, it tells you a lot of different things, and then agricultural processing.
Alright, I wasn't thinking of it that way.
Is, isn't manufacturing, it has, and that fifty-one percent is because it came from that place, and that's what.
You're saying it's an accessory to an agricultural use.
Right, so that, that way, you can say, this isn't just, I'm just processing my own farm stuff, not doing the manufacturing. Cheese, but only if you're on a dairy farm.
On a dairy farm, right.
But if you just wanna set up a cheese factory, you've gotta do that where we do factories, right?
Okay, alright, I missed that.
And that's fine, I, I'm with you, but I, like, that's, apologies for.
So that's what the accessory to the agricultural use.
From the agriculture, exactly, and that, that's.
Got it.
That gives you the ability to process onsite, when normally you wouldn't have, be able to set up a facility like that in like a rural zone.
That, that makes sense.
Okay, I understand that now.
Alright.
Yeah.
Alright.
Thank you, Sam.
Yep.
Okay, can I go to blasting?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I was gonna go blasting.
Okay. I don't think we need the purpose of producing an explosion. I just think that we need an activity using explosives for the purpose of fracturing or fragmented rock for mining, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So you don't need, you don't need an explosive to make an explosion, you just need an explosion.
Well, yeah, oh god, this is getting where it gets weird, you can actually use an explosive to make an implosion when you're doing some of these things.
I'm not saying that you can't, but I'd say you don't have to.
That is, it's a little bit loquacious.
It is, but I think it's fine as is, it, it, I know it doubles out, but it's, it's very specific that way, because it's not. There's other things that you can use explosives for that aren't necessarily just an explosion, it, it's a really weird piece to look at it, but like, there are. It gets written this way for a reason.
We should do this over a drink.
Yes, sir.
Getting to that time.
Just about. We've handled the storage and sales part of the boat and shipyard.
Yes.
Okay, that's all I have in the three hundred.
Yes, and there's places of worship.
Can we have.
Places of worship, I'm just concerned about that, places of worship, place of worship, is there another way of saying that, that? In the, no, in the definition.
I, I know, I'm, I'm just pulling this up. So, if we change it there, we change it.
No, no, I'm good with places of worship, it's just that.
Saying the first words after place of worship is a place, like, so you're defining it with a.
But I don't know if there's another way of saying it, I mean, I think place of worship is the more neutral way of saying church.
Yep.
Yeah, you can't use the definition in the definition.
I guess you could say like a venue, living without living quarters, something like that.
Person's engaged.
Carry on church activities?
Religious activities.
Yeah, religious.
Is it a structure?
Well, I think a venue is the right, is the right word.
Yeah, I think venue probably makes sense.
It's funny, the use table is kind of somewhere in this liminal zone between structures and uses.
Yeah, yeah.
It's like storage, it's not really like a use, like, it's kind of both.
Venue is nice.
Yes, I like venue as well.
Rob's got, Rob's got the word.
Provided that any such religion is recognized under the laws of the state of Maine and the United States of America as a charitable organization.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
Good.
So then just the first part remains. So this I had a comment on. So, how do you measure the height of a building? As an architect, this is important to me, because I'm gonna produce the drawings that are gonna show that I'm conforming to that height. And especially for smoke sites, it can be tricky. And it's not as simple as, like, on a flat site, it's easy, it's like, there's the ground that existed prior to any kind of development, and you just go up from there thirty-four feet, but on a sloped site, it's like, very different, the top, the bottom.
True.
Is it thirty-four feet, like, as if you were to just offset that ground thirty-four feet, and now you have like the sloped maximum? Or is the maximum set at the entrance?
So.
Or at the bottom, or some average?
Inside of the downtown district.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was about to say the same thing.
Yeah, let's say you go to that piece where they talk about, like, for marine use.
Yeah.
It's allowed to be fifty feet, and it defines how you get through, and it's from the high edge of the foundation of the gray, like, and it's, and it defines where you put that measuring mark.
Yeah.
Right, so like, if you have.
Highest point of the original grade.
You had a knee wall that landed here, and the building came out, and the slope kept going down, top of that knee wall with the gray, like, where that dirt is.
Yeah.
Is your starting point, you go from there. As I read it.
And if the slope goes down precipitously, then your building could be like a hundred feet tall.
Face could look like seventy feet.
Right.
Or whatever it is.
Right.
But from the top, like, from the, where the dirt comes down to the back side.
It does somewhere else say adjacent to the foundation.
Yeah.
The original grade adjacent to the foundation.
Maximum height on the Eves shall be.
Yeah.
The Eves is this one, but height shall be fifty feet measured from the highest point on the central street sidewalk adjacent to the foundation.
So adjacent to the foundation, so, and we're getting technical as to how you measure this, but it's like, okay, you've got a foundation adjacent to it, what, is perpendicular to the line, and then you go inboard as far as you want, and then to that height maximum? As far out as you want, like, what, what is the adjacent to?
Well, how about, vertical distance measured from the highest point of the uniformed finished grade?
Uniformed finished grade, where elsewhere it says, original grade adjacent to the foundation.
Yeah.
So, you could, you could, like I said here, it's like, um, sloping sites and filled sites, so if you came along and you had a site and you just like raised the grade up ten feet, and then you put a thirty-four foot structure on top of it, and you buried the ground floor under the grade, like, you could get a really tall building. So that's the finish grade, original grade would say, no, it's whatever existed prior to you doing anything. Which I think is the easier way of doing it, just original grade.
So take a uniform finish and go original?
It, because it's, original is used elsewhere, it's even actually used in the definition below that we're getting rid of.
From the original grade to the highest point of the roof.
Throw an extra I in there, but you'll be alright.
Is it what?
Original.
I was waiting for it to tell me.
I know, I figured it'd get you there.
Beat it, you beat me to it.
Okay, um, and then, so does that still max or match up with what we wrote under?
The nine hundred?
Yeah, the nine, whatever.
Oh, that note?
Is antennae, does that mean only the, uh, things on grasshoppers? Or does it, is a mechanical, like a television antenna? Is it antennae, television antennae, or is it in television antennas?
Antennas. Yeah. It might be antennas, you could say aerials.
Could be aerials too.
Antennae.
I don't think it's antennae.
That's like people trying to sound smart and saying octopi, but really the correct thing is octopuses.
Is it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Cause if it's Greek, which comes from the Greek, it'd be octopus, so it doesn't, it's not Latin, you can't do a Latin ending on a Greek root.
You can, you just.
Can't, no, you sound. You can. No, you're trying to sound smart, but you actually.
Sound like a dick.
I'm trying to sound smart.
Uh, where is the marine use piece?
In nine thirteen.
Yeah, well, no, I know, I'm looking in nine thirteen to read it.
You can get rid of that.
Yep.
Original grade, yeah, okay, same deal. It's like that one, just original grade as well.
Mm-hmm. That's the most common.
Right. Uh, this one, I've proposed to remove that because we have standards. Okay.
So that's all of that.
Okay, that's the land use.
Okay, do we need to vote on this?
Yes.
Okay, is there a motion to recommend the changes that we've made tonight to the select board to be put on the town ballot?
So moved.
Thanks, Sam. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Sorry, just double check, we, inside of nine hundred, we changed all the dwelling dimensions on the dimension table that we.
Oh, yeah, you were out, yes.
Yeah, sorry, just wanted to make sure.
Yes.
Good.
It, we didn't change anything from what you saw prior to this meeting, so.
Yeah.
It's as you saw.
Yeah.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor? Five to zero zero.
Good.
Okay, subdivision?
Yeah.
Subdivision is basically just changing.
Very easy.
Board to planning board and planning office to planning and development office, right?
Planning and development director to planning and development office.
Yeah.
And then, yeah, a couple other, like, planning office to planning and development office.
Can you just go to the things that aren't changes to, that are, of that nature?
Yep, there's someone who made that.
That's been bothering me forever.
Yeah, when I, when I uploaded this, it's an old Word document, and then Word, you know, anyway, did some stuff. So, okay, not that one. Article three, definitions, okay. There was a change in definitions. Four. When I get to, here we go. So subdivisions. So the definition of subdivision defaults to the state's definition, totally fine. Uh, the definition that's gonna change is only gonna affect really our minor subdivision, so what the subdivision definition changed to, if y'all remember or not, uh, they, they, it's, it's a, uh, so three lots or more constitutes subdivision review, but one lot with five or less dwellings or units does not constitute subdivision. So if someone wanted to have one lot, put a four-unit complex on it, they can do that, and it would go through normal action, but it wouldn't go through subdivision review.
So Chelsea Market subdivision, we would not have reviewed.
One, two, three, four, yep, that's correct. If, so, correct.
Yeah.
We would not have had to have.
Yep.
Having this. Um.
When did this go into effect?
June.
It goes, yep, yep. So by taking out the dwelling units, by taking out the dwelling units on the minor subdivision, we then become fully compliant with.
Yeah.
Yeah, that makes more sense anyway.
Is that correct?
Word there, less or fewer?
I would say fewer.
Okay.
Since it's a number.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, article four, same thing, just changed for clarity.
Yeah.
Article six, minor subdivision, same clarification point. And then, there's a.
We just can't start anything new.
No, the changes. For timeline, I, I kinda wanna get y'all's opinion on this. Um, it's for the public notice. And, okay, right here, so, the planning and development office shall cause notice of the daytime and place of such hearing to be given to applicants to be published in a newspaper of general circulation in Rockport at least two times. The date of the first publication at least seven days prior to the hearing. Um, that is totally achievable, but the second time would be after the hearing, just the way that the public notices line up. So I have to give it to them by Friday by four P M for it to get into the Thursday after. So in order for me to achieve two times circulation before a meeting, which makes the most sense, uh, I have to have it out three weeks before the meeting, which is fine, but just to make that circulation, I have to have it three Thursdays before so I can get it to the newspaper that Friday, so it can circulate twice before, even though I don't have to do that. But that next circulation, if I do it just one day before, or one, one week before, seven days before, it'll go after the meeting, so it'll be in the newspaper after the meeting's already happened.
Even digital?
Says in a, general circulation in Rockport at least two times, first publication at least seven days prior to the hearing. So if it's gonna be the public notice in the public notice section of papers, can I do, can I do it there? Yeah, sure. Can I satisfy it in other ways? Yes. But I'm just curious of y'all's impression of it.
What's the state?
State requirement?
That.
That.
So I don't wanna change it, I don't wanna have an understanding. Yep. So anyway, something to mull on, for us to think on, but how I handle it in the office is I get it out to have two circulations both before the meeting. I don't think y'all see an issue with that, but just more time that these subdivisions have to be received by.
I mean, it just appears in the section newspaper, it's just a stack of notices, one per town.
Yep, that some people pay attention to, many people do not. All right. Um, next article, same cleanup stuff. But I am proposing for the preliminary plan, so, uh, article six, what did I say? Where did it go? Give me a minute. Okay.
Wasn't, didn't I see something?
Yeah, you were on it.
Three weeks instead of fifteen days?
That, that's, that's here, that's on, that's on the preliminary plan. And that's into this conversation. If I have it three weeks before someone they submit it, submit an application for approval, preliminary plan at least three weeks prior to the regularly scheduled meeting, that allows me that two-time circulation. So if I, if I get it the way it was worded fifteen days before, that I don't even get on the agenda for that meeting. So I, I gotta bump that back at least. So, anyway.
Sorry, I always read that as fifteen business days, meaning it was three weeks.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
But, all right, three weeks it is. Sounds good.
Yep.
Same thing. Uh, and I think the same thing says it over here somewhere, if it is prior to. The applicant adjustment application for approval, excuse me, it's three weeks. Okay.
There you go.
Um, and the rest of this is cleanup of what we've already discussed.
Yep.
To be congruent. Okay, two more to go.
Wait, 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 go back to that last one.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, zoning, planning board.
Good catch. That one wasn't supposed to happen.
Yeah, that's not the one to change.
No. Okay, good catch. Same, uh, round of changes in this article. Okay.
Yep.
Article nine.
Three weeks.
Yep, that is it.
Okay, is there not like ten, one at the top, if we look at that one?
Orion?
Yeah. We, we went through this one.
Okay.
Two changes. One, in the header of the.
Yeah.
Subdivision ordinance. Rockport is spelled wrong?
Yep.
Okay. And second, throughout the whole thing, there are times when a number is spelled out and then followed by the numeral, and there are times when it's not.
Okay.
And I think we ought to be uniform in how we do that.
Okay. So number and then spelled out?
Yeah, well, well, usually you spell it out and then followed by the numeral in parentheses.
Oh.
But it's not always done, it's not always done, it's not always done the same way. So it should be uniform.
Good. I can make those changes. Does anybody have an issue with that?
None.
Good.
Jan, to your issue with SharePoint and clicking on his link that brings you to the PDFs. So what I would do, I, I know what it is, it's basically just your all-town email, but whenever I get the email from Orion says, the stuff's ready for you guys, I just go to a bookmark that I have for the SharePoint, and then I go through that.
That's gonna be smart.
Yeah.
Good.
Okay, so we're done with subdivision?
Done with subdivision.
Okay. Um, is there a motion to recommend to the select board the changes that we reviewed tonight to the subdivision ordinance?
So moved.
Thank you, Sam. Thank you, Jan. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Five to zero zero. Okay. We're in other business, so due to his time and that, um, his, the busyness of his schedule, Scott Gazelle has stepped down from the planning board, so we thank him for his service. He was an alternate for a while and then became a full member, and he just found that he just has too much going on, he's unable to attend the meetings. So we are looking for another member, so if anyone knows somebody that they'd like to invite or would be a good candidate, um, I'd recommend them to contact Orion or contact myself. Um, we're looking for both an alternate or two alternates, two alternates and a, and a full member, so that goes out to the town.
Do you currently have an alternate?
I don't think so.
No.
No, it'd be good to have a couple. So.
Seems to me we had some other people, they just sort of disappeared.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep. I've got one thing to talk about, but that's it?
Um, and one more thing, uh, date for future meetings. I think everybody is set okay to August twenty-one as opposed to the twenty-eighth, um, except for Sam.
Yeah, no, it's fine.
Okay.
In fact, I wasn't gonna be able to make the twenty-eighth, so.
Okay.
Works out better.
Great.
The next meeting will be August twenty-first or twenty-first?
Twenty-first, yep.
I started at four, so.
Yeah, other business?
Yes. Um, so I sent y'all an email about the comprehensive plan implementation committee. This is not an official committee yet.
Oh, yeah.
Um, I, I put together a proposed mission in charge and sent that to John, and I think that's gonna be on this agenda for the select board to kind of create. Um, I'm gonna propose to have at least two members from the planning board, if y'all want to be on that, put some thought to it, but pretty much this committee is gonna be taking the comprehensive plan, going through it, and proposing the recommendations to be implemented throughout the next year. So that would include the budget process, the capital improvement process, and the work plan process for all the other committees. So in terms of getting to know the comp plan pretty well and implementing it, it'd be a good thing to do.
How many members would there be on that?
I'm proposing no more than nine. Once you get ten or more, it gets complicated.
Yeah.
So.
Okay, so that'd be a limited shelf life of that board?
But, but two, two, two of those nine would be in my proposal, to be two members of the planning board.
Okay.
So.
Okay, well, think about it individually, and also Peter's not here, and he could be an eligible person to. Um, all right.
And then make sure to read the comp plan if you haven't.
Yeah.
That adds the color of making decisions on certain things.
Yep.
So.
Okay, um, anything else? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn?
Okay.
Second.
Everyone's moving to adjourn. I'm just gonna say Jan's got it, Sam's got the second, and all those in favor of adjournment?
Yeah.
Five at eight fifty-seven?
Cool.
Very much, gentlemen.